Our city attorneys, so we have already called the meeting to order. And this will now be the public part of our meeting. Our agenda is the same as was advertised, so there's no change in that. This is the last city council meeting of 2016. So, yes, the next meeting will be on January 11th when we return. At that time, we'll have a resolution affirming the Green Team priorities, which we talked about last week. And likely, we will pick up the conversation on Tacoma Junction redevelopment. We'll have a check-in. And the other work session when we return is a discussion of proposed Tacoma Park Scholarship Program for Montgomery College students. So something to look forward to. And then, in January, we get into doing our budget retreats and starting our conversation on that. So more dates will be posted by the city clerk, so just mark your calendars that January 11th will be our next meeting. All right. Moving forward then, we have one voting item this evening on Section 4 of the Development Agreement between NDC and the City of Tacoma Park. So at this time, we'll take public comments on any voting items. I believe Ms. Berger from the Co-op asked to have extra time, so if you want to kick us off?
How did we get where we are today? We started off together with such dreams for an expanded Co-op and a rejuvenated junction where our community could enjoy it and shop and just be part of the excitement. And now, we're looking at each other with distrust, frustration, and in some points, animosity. Fake news. You know the term. It's what we heard throughout the Trump campaign. It's what led to the ping-pong pizza incident. Stories accepted as true without checking the facts. But here, in Tacoma Park, fake news item number one. The Co-op has been uncooperative throughout the development process. Facts. We have responded to every request for information or action in a timely and thorough way, and we have attended every requested meeting. Due to time constraints, I cannot share the complete listing, but will be happy to provide it at your request. When asked by council to notify them which of the two finalists would best meet our needs, we expressed our support for NDC, whose proposal included an expansion to the Co-op's current location in the Turner Building and access to an unloading area for the 18-wheelers. When NDC requested, we provide specifications for our business needs. We hired Development Cooperative, a company that has designed over 250 expansions and new buildings for food cooperatives throughout the country, and rushed them to complete the work to expedite this process. We then waited four months before receiving any response from NDC. We believe the 18-wheelers mentioned in documentation many times, starting in January of 2014, would access the site in a way similar to what we use now until June of 2016, when we were notified no large trucks would be entering the site. NDC asked the Co-op to come up with an unloading plan that would work for us without providing any parameters such as desired developable space. We paid an architectural firm to do just that. This plan, which is on the city website, was rejected. When NDC asked for verification that UNFI, our major distributor, could not use smaller trucks, I forwarded NDC's written questions to our area representative and relayed the responses. The entire exchange can be found on our website. Buying through UNFI is a requirement for all food cooperatives that participate in the National Cooperative Grocers Association. This enables an economy of scale so that we can obtain products at the most advantageous prices. UNFI verified that they cannot use smaller trucks and they cannot consolidate deliveries. NDC had asked about the maximum distance tailgate to loading dock that UNFI will unload from. The response was that UNFI does not set a distance cap, but a time-to-service cap, the amount of time it takes them to make the delivery and get their drivers back on their way. Increasing that distance according to them, even a few feet, could have a major negative financial impact. Fake news item number two. TPSS can compromise by having goods delivered off-site, either to a warehouse of some kind or another local grocery store, and then truck via smaller trucks. So we went to our grocery operations experts and asked them their response. Off-site receiving is not something that a single store operation of your size can afford to undertake. It has all sorts of costs, including but not limited to labor, rent, fitting out and maintaining the space for proper delivery, refrigeration, and food safety, and an additional opportunity for theft or shrink at an off-site location. Extra costs would make you more vulnerable to competition. Every other grocer in the area is set up to receive their full complement of trucks on-site and try to out-compete every other grocer. None of them would have the spaces set up to receive, hold, and redistribute to a competitor. They are sized for their own operations and no more, and they wouldn't take the liability, time, or expense to receive on our behalf. Fake news item number three. The Co-op has been trying to derail the development from the beginning. For goodness sakes, it was our expansion that started this process. To date, in an effort to move the project forward, we have spent $130,770 on development consultants, architects, and an attorney. This does not include the thousands of hours, staff hours, that have been dedicated to this effort. I personally have refused salary raises so that money could go towards our consultants. And this year alone, I'm giving up 200 paid leave hours because I want to be available to make this work. Now, does that sound to you like someone who wants to sabotage this effort from the beginning when it's our own expansion at stake? The Co-op has been told we should just sign a letter of intent and work out the details later. How can we make a commitment of any kind that affects the future of the Co-op when the terms are constantly changing? Of course, we understood from the beginning that some modifications would be made to the original NDC proposal. What we are talking about today are not modifications, but total new plan. Surely, this is not in the spirit of the Tacoma Park Municipal Code Section 7.08.050, which says, "After the opening of bids, no changes in bid prices or other provisions of bids prejudicial to the interest of the city or fair competition should be permitted." Just yesterday, Bruce Levin of Keystone, who was the city's second choice after NDC, sent an unsolicited response to an email from the Old Tacoma Business Association about NDC's latest plans, writing, "Interestingly, NDC has abandoned their original proposal to load internally." Putting aside the unacceptable suggestion that we break our lease, Mr. Washington's letter of December 1st started us thinking about a different approach that might benefit our community. NDC's latest plan allocates fewer square feet than we were expecting for our retail space. While remaining in the Turner Building and adding a small expansion, we might be able to work out an arrangement to use a portion of the anticipated expansion rent towards rental of the use of an unloading area. The Co-op would even be willing to contribute $30,000 to help defray the cost of creating such an area that would be closer to our delivery entrance than the proposed lay-by and it would be accessible by our trucks. Throughout this whole process, we have been stunned by the complete disrespect shown to our general manager, Abdi Ghulad. In June 2016, De'Aaron McKinney of NDC wrote, "We recognize that we are real estate developers and not experienced professionals in grocery store logistics such as loading." The city has echoed that statement more than once, yet time and again, we have been told by people who admittedly have no experience in running a grocery store that something works for the Co-op. Abdi started as a stalker in 1998 and held several management positions before becoming general manager. He obviously knows how to run a grocery store. Yet each time, he has analyzed the suggestion and determined it would not work operationally or economically, his input has been dismissed. At a time when our country can elect Donald Trump as president, the Co-op keeps its word and strives to maintain the values that form our mission and are shared by our Tacoma Park community. As you work through this session, please feel free to turn to me for clarification or confront me if you find any instances of misinformation I have shared. Thank you.
Joe Hubner, I live right down the street from the Co-op, a block and a half. And I've tried to keep my eye on this, and I did a little research, and I find that three of the four finalist solutions had, and the drawings that were submitted to the council, had loading docks at the rear of the building, including NDC's. And NDC has now changed that. Residents were willing to follow the council's selection based on these drawings, and now they've changed. The city manager noted in her email to the residents that keeping the aesthetic of the neighborhood is a key factor. Well, tractor-trailers parked on Carroll Avenue is not my idea of aesthetic value. Three of the four council criteria for Junction, for the Junction revolved around the Co-op. The only four items that got a three, the maximum number from the criteria that you guys selected, three of them revolved around the Co-op. Loading and unloading is the Gordian knot of the development to include the Co-op. Loading has been the major issue all the way along. Everything else is kind of workable from my perspective. The fire department themselves came here and said, they responded that the front loading complicates fire operations and may create unsafe conditions. As soon as they say that, State Highway is going to kick this right out the door. If NDC cannot untie this Gordian knot, look elsewhere. You know, they've spent, the Co-op spent twice as much as they spent. I've spoken to neighbors who responded when they heard about the loading and unloading on Carroll Avenue and the deficits to the Co-op, to just leave it the way it is. Why are we bound to make this decision right now? You can extend it 30 days, you can think about it 30 days, you can put the rope out there for them to hang themselves. If they cannot cut the Gordian knot, then they're never going to cross into Persia. They've got to figure this out. If they can't figure it out, they're not the only game in town. Thank you.
Jimmy Dawkus, live on Woodland Avenue, and I was here, maybe it was a year ago, maybe it was a little longer ago. And not a public comment, but a question. And I may not be up on all the data, so if you could direct me to it, but nearly 18 months ago, or at the start of this, we asked some questions about the costs and the economic impact of the development. And I'm not sure that I've seen an assessment of what we as a town or as individual citizens get out of the development. And I know there's been a lot of talk about that, but I've never seen any numbers to know as we look at the different options, if we kept it as a parking lot, or if we developed it in open space, or if we developed the, excuse me, the NDC proposal, what are the impacts on tax revenue and other kinds of things like that? Because it seems like that's just a fundamental question that helps us to look at the context of the decisions and maybe some of the trade-offs. And so if that's something I could ask the council to get back to us, then that would be great.
We have a whole schedule of the return on the ground lease versus not getting tax money, for example, on a parking lot, and a number of other comparisons. I think it would all be there, but I'm happy to walk you through it.
My name is Tavu. I live at 7720 Carroll Avenue. With all due respect, you offended me, the gentleman who spoke. I am a living person who've been dreaming to put a coffee shop at that table for the last six, seven years. Forget about our numbers, okay? That offended me, all right? This is a public space, and all of our aspirations has to be accommodated, all right? So please, take a look, a second look, before you make a remarkable, profound, offensive statement like that. I am a human being with a dream, and I want to see my coffee shop built on that space. Next to that, I would like to express the profound support I have for NDC. It's a small, it's not even a development company. It's a small neighborhood building, construction building company. I love the Co-op. I want the Co-op to stay, but I want to leave too. And this place belongs to all the citizens of Tacoma Park, not the Co-op members, not the people who live around the Co-op. Please bear in mind, we have to live together. All our dreams have to be accommodated. I love the Co-op, but I have to exist as well. So that space has to accommodate all our needs and aspirations. Please, do whatever it takes. I can't wait any longer. I'm dying. I'm dying to open, to put my dream. And that dream is going to make everybody proud because it's going to be what Starbucks is to Seattle someday. It's a little dream, but trust me, I'm positioning my company in the $6 billion market. And please, you know, let's be very, let's accommodate all the aspirations and dreams that we have in this great place called Tacoma Park. I love the Co-op, but I have to exist. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Keith Kozloff. I live at 6904 Sycamore. I submitted a statement to the city earlier this week regarding the redevelopment, and tonight, I'd like to express qualified support for the first option proposed by NDC. As I understand it, and admittedly, the information's a little bit uncertain for me, this option allows the Co-op to continue operating during the construction of a dedicated new space with less disruption than the alternative of modifying the Turner Building to expand the Co-op space. And it would also create a more unified overall design for redeveloping the junction than would either expanding the Turner Building or leaving that building as is and developing around it. And it would optimize the combined square footage of the two lots for the expanded Co-op, other businesses, and community space, and offer the most parking. Now, my support for this option is qualified because as a non-expert looking into the process, I don't really have an objective way to evaluate the respective assertions of the two parties. Without casting responsibility, what does seem clear is that trust between them has not been established yet. So as a final opportunity to expand the Co-op, I do support the city giving the parties limited additional time to reach an agreement. It's probably too late for them to secure a mediator, but if they're willing, it might help for the city to have a representative present and observe, but not participate in future sessions of the extended negotiation. If the parties are not able to reach agreement within the deadline specified, I would urge the city to authorize NDC to identify another non-competing anchor tenant and move forward. As someone who supports both Co-op expansion and redevelopment of the city lot, I would find this outcome profoundly disappointing. Regardless, my thanks to the mayor and council for your continued efforts to balance the various community interests in this redevelopment process. And for what it's worth, I brought hard copies of what I said tonight, as well as my longer statement that I submitted online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to provide those? Keith? Do you want to provide the statements, just so we can?
Next person, Kevin.
Hi, my name is August Adams. I live on Lee Avenue. I just found out about this project yesterday and was, yeah, no, I, we only moved back in, yeah, I know, right? I'm probably maybe the least in the know, but I tried to read through the documents, and we just moved back into the neighborhood recently, even though we've owned a building here. Anyway, I love the Co-op. My wife uses the Co-op. We use it weekly. I'm sure a lot of people use it all the time. It's a great, you know, wonderful asset for the neighborhood. So I was surprised to see that this was playing out, and I feel like there's, there's got to be some way to reach a resolution that satisfies everyone. And I just, I urge the, you know, the city council to help make that happen, even though it seems like we're in the 11th hour or something like that, 11 and a half hour, whatever. And I think, you know, reading over things, the Tacoma Junction project looks like it will be a great way to move the neighborhood forward, and I think, you know, it's a wonderful way to expand the Co-op's facility. But I guess I was kind of left, you know, with two questions if I can put to the council, you know? And the first one is, you know, a simple one, does the council want to see the Co-op stay in the neighborhood? I know that might be very direct, but if, you know, I could ask that of the council, is that something that?
Since you haven't been here, I'll answer a question.
Sure.
We've said that numerous times, that that is the primary goal.
Okay, great. My second question is, it seems like so much of this lack of resolution, I read through the letter from NDC, the project plan, plus the Co-op's response and what I could, and it seems like a big sticking point is this back-end loading dock. And so my second question is, does the council support this concept of a back-end loading dock for the Co-op?
During, so during public comments, we don't, this is, this is not what we do. No, no, it's okay. So the information is on the website. The council is not taking a position on any of the concepts right now because the concepts are between the Co-op and NDC as they negotiate or work towards an LOI. There will be a community process that is outlined in the development agreement and on the materials that are on the website. Once we're moved past this stage and we have a residents committee that is helping with that outreach effort to gather public comments. So the time to actually comment, do we like this, don't we like that, will be coming once we get over this part of it. It was specified in the development agreement that the council stipulated, because the Co-op was such an important entity, we wanted NDC and the Co-op to reach a letter of intent. Once that is done, or that time passes, and as Mr. Kozloff said, if the council decides to allow NDC to look for another anchor tenant that's not a non-competitor, then again, we will start the community process. So I think at this time, we're not going to necessarily answer, do we like this or do we not like that? Because there are a lot of things about this, these concepts and the development that we will be answering in the future.
Okay. I guess to wrap up, I would ask that, you know, to make sure, I'm not sure if I fully processed that because there's some extra details in there, but if the council can play whatever role it can to help reach resolution on this so that the Co-op can stay in the neighborhood, I think the expansion would be great. It seems like they have a really, I don't run a grocery store, but it seems like they have a valid case that the back-end loading dock is both good for their needs and seems like it's good from the resident's perspective, not impacting the front area. So if that could be resolved, and it was in the original NDC proposal before it was removed, it seems very reasonable that this be accommodated. I hope that the council can help steward that along, and we can keep the Co-op in the neighborhood because I think everyone would love to see that stay and have them supported because they've, you know, given so much to the community. Great, thank you.
Thank you. And since you're new or back, if you want to speak with any one of us and get an update on things, and after you look at it, and especially the city staff, we're more than happy to do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm Tom Kaufman. I live around Manor Circle. Originally, where the Co-op stands now, CVS was going to build a 9,000-square-foot, 24-hour-a-day drugstore. And a bunch of us got together and we petitioned, and we did a survey in the Tacoma Voice, and by an enormous margin, people wanted to see a supermarket in that spot. And getting the Co-op to move into that building was a wonderful thing for the neighborhood, for the people around it. So the Co-op, I mean, it's not just a place to buy groceries, although there's that, but it's also a great social, meeting your neighbors, talking to people, finding out what's going NDC, I think, is a very good company also. And so my hope is, is that with another extension for a letter of intent, the two can reconcile and figure out a way to move forward. And I don't know if it's even possible for the city to help in some way, maybe hiring a mediator to work with these two groups so that it can move forward, but I think that would be money well spent if it's possible.
I'm Mark Sherman. I live on Hancock Avenue, about one block from the Co-op. I'm a pedestrian. I don't own a car. I don't own a car by choice. So when I go to the Co-op, I put everything in my arms, put a few things in my pocket, and I walk home. I don't even usually take a shopping bag. And I think what, part of what's been missing in our discussion is about what it means to pedestrians to have the grocery store at that location. The options before you imply that some other anchor tenant could be found, as if the grocery store could be sort of anywhere within the 20912 ZIP code. But for those of us who live nearby, this is what makes Tacoma Park a walkable community. Please keep that in mind.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf, my name is Diane Curran. I'm here on behalf of a group of citizens that wrote to you recently. We just want to reiterate that we appreciate all the work that the city council has done on this. We really appreciate your reaching out to the State Highway Administration and trying to get them involved in resolving these issues. We think, as Mark was saying, that it's, the Co-op is important to pedestrians, the junction is difficult for pedestrians, and this is a big problem that really begs for more study and a solution. We just want to reiterate that we urge you to approve the requested 30-day extension of this LOI process to study the idea of a lay-by and the traffic and pedestrian impacts. And just for myself personally, I think that I agree with Mark Sherman that a grocery store, a walkable grocery store in Tacoma Park is really important. And we're getting to a point in this process where just having any grocery store may not be possible if this inability to resolve the loading dock issue can't be addressed. This issue's going to come up with any store that tries to go into that space, and there's just not very many such spaces. I personally believe that it would have been much more helpful if, at the outset, the city had been more explicit in the request for proposal about its requirements for making sure that a grocery store can survive in that particular location. But at this point, here we are, as somebody was saying, at the 11th hour, it's all the more important for the city to get involved, to exercise its authority, to make sure that everything possible is done to resolve these issues and allow the Co-op to continue to operate on the site. And again, thank you very much. I know it's been a long struggle for you, and we appreciate it. Thanks.
My name is Paul Ruther, and I live a shockingly far distance away from the Co-op. I'm over a mile away. But I am a Co-op member, and I've shopped there many years. Like a lot of members at the Co-op, I don't pay attention to every nuance and detail, but I do have experience in the Co-op movement. I was a manager at Bethesda Co-op for seven years. And I know that to run a successful natural foods retail business, you need to be able to have 18-wheelers come into the driveway and the loading dock. And the idea, the very notion that you would have them deliver off-site and then have a third party come and deliver the groceries is ridiculous beyond economic feasibility. So I'm proud that when the Co-op was asked by NDC to look into both of these patently ridiculous measures, they did due diligence, they studied the issue, apparently, they responded respectfully, and they wasted both time and money in doing so. That makes me proud of the Co-op's due diligence. I think when the city correctly identified the Co-op as the anchor tenant, having an anchor tenant means a certain amount of respect and knowledge is sought for. So if NDC made one proposal initially that accommodated the anchor tenant, and then began to shift and move things around and come up with untenable solutions, it shows disrespect for the anchor tenant and disrespect for the city. I'd like to see NDC come to the table fairly and honestly and try to come up with a proposal that's workable for the Co-op. The Co-op, to me, is the primary motivation here. That's why you all determined that it's an anchor tenant. I thank you for your time and energy. I thank you for your time and energy, and I look forward to a resolution, hopefully between NDC and the co-op.
My name is Adam Frank. I'm at 408 Boyd Avenue. Just wanted to make a couple clarifications. First, it's important to remember the co-op does not own the building that we're currently in. We have a lease with the Turners. Currently, we have a 20-year lease that was given to us because we agreed to stay in the building for 20 years. In a letter of December 1st, Mr. Washington stated that NDC was sure we could get out of our lease. However, no one has reviewed our lease, except us and the Turners. And we cannot get out of it unless we go out of business, which we certainly do not plan to do. Second, the owners are not interested in selling the building. We've asked, even for ourselves, and they are simply not interested in selling. They love the community and the co-op, even though they don't live here anymore, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Lorraine Pierceon, Vice President of Historic Tacoma, and I want to urge, on behalf of HDI, that you do give another 30 days to the deliberation and, you know, I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And I wanted to tag along after the gentleman that just went before because, to me, the big elephant in the room is, you don't have any options. You were given this by the developer, but they don't exist. There are no options that were given to you by NDC because NDC does not own the property. How can NDC be showing you options when they have no control over the land? I, you know, so, I think a lot of work still needs to be done because my understanding is, there's a property owner there who's not going to sell. And that is always where it was. I mean, there was no, you know, when these proposals came forward, everyone envisioned an expansion onto the side of the co-op and the use of the building. And so, here we are, all this time later. And I must express just a little, you know, frustration. How come you don't really have an option? Because you don't have an option here from NDC. Or perhaps you can show me where you do. But I think a lot of work needs to be done. So, please, please grant the extra 30 days so you can get a real option. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. Neil Cohen. I live on Columbia Avenue, also within walking distance of the co-op, as many of the people here do tonight. And I was struck by Tababu's comments earlier, which really noted that this is a city lot. It's not just for people who live within walking distance of the co-op. And I look at the broad representation on our city council, I look at Tacoma-Langley Crossroads, I look at all the various parts of our city who do not necessarily live within walking distance of the co-op, who cannot necessarily afford to feed a family of four or five at the co-op. And I shop at the co-op. I'm a co-op member. I love and appreciate having the co-op here. I don't share, I've been here for eight years, I've not been here for 30 years, so I don't know what life was like before we had a co-op here. And so I appreciate its presence. And the council has gone above and beyond to protect the co-op in all of the documents. And this idea, this fallacy, we're talking about fake news, Marilyn, the fallacy that the co-op is being forced out of business is bunk. You know, the co-op is in a separate building, on a separate piece of property, they can continue, the NDC has to provide them reasonable accommodation, and if I've seen anything, this council is willing to go to bat to protect the co-op, to make sure that the co-op is not going to be put out of business, there's not going to be a fence around the co-op that NDC puts out in some sort of ill will. They've just proposed to build the co-op a brand-new building, a brand-new building, to have no break-in operations. So, for, to come up here and say that NDC's done nothing, all we've seen, all I've seen as a community member is, for different iterations of NDC's creativity and attempts to make use of the space for the entire community, so Mr. Tababu and others could open a stall in the Tacoma market, the open union market. How can a business survive unloading an 18-wheeler? It doesn't make any sense, they're going to go out of business. We see it downtown, Ace Hardware. They move bags of mulch, they move much heavier things every day across the street they unload, and they're thriving. And they're a thriving cornerstone of our community as well. There, these arguments, you know, I personally, you know, I think of Woody Allen. Woody Allen says, "90% of life is showing up," and I heard that the co-op showed up to all the meetings they were invited to. And I heard the co-op reported to the council every time the council wanted them to. But what I haven't seen is something other than, let's keep a large paved surface lot so we can deliver and, at the expense of the rest of the community, where there could be a gathering space, where there could be eight to 10 new stall communities and vibrancy that will likely bring more foot traffic and more profit to the co-op. So, I frankly, I want to encourage the council to continue, I want to encourage NDC to continue its creative solutions, I want to encourage the co-op to engage in a constructive and a creative manner. I don't want a large part, a lot, to unload an 18-wheeler. I want a place where the community can gather, can shop, and can support new local businesses. So, please, thank you for your time.
I live at 6719 Conway Avenue. I can't imagine that you're not going to vote for the 30-day extension, but given the holidays, given the holidays in the next six months, and, sorry, in the previous...
We're going to make you stay. No, I'm sorry.
Given the holidays in the previous six months of unsuccessful operations, which, as far as I know, has not included a third-party mediator, I would like to know what the city's going to do, either directly or motivationally, to kind of either light a fire or start a process where we get that mediator and get these two parties in the room and figuring something out. Because I think if we fight through this, everyone's going to suffer, and if we can work something out, we'll have a better solution.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Lowen, Sycamore Avenue. I just wanted to make the point, with all due respect, that the comparison with Ace Hardware is really not a relevant one or a very apt one because Ace is part of a much larger chain, national chain, and they have massive warehouses and, small chain?
No, no, it was...
This is under your authority.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so...
Maybe we could stop the comments from you.
Okay, well, I stand corrected. Thank you. But they do have a large, I believe, a large warehouse and distribution and sorting ability off-site, whereas the co-op sources from small producers in our region and, you know, is supporting small, organic farming. So, you know, there's, it's sort of part of this larger, you know, ecological equation that the co-op stands for. And so, that's just to the importance of the co-op and the community, but I, and I think we all understand that, and council agrees, so I understand. And the NRDC, I wonder if this was a surprise, just how protective this community would be about the functioning of our co-op and their ability to survive and hang on through a very disruptive process. And then back to, I haven't heard anybody bring the, well, I guess we touched on the traffic study, but that is, I believe, of the most importance, you know, its safety and bike lanes and so many other issues that are really valuable to us. And we have to sort that out before we can really talk about trucks and parking and those things that really do potentially threaten the well-being and success of the co-op. Thank you.
My name is Susan Robb, and I live on Manor Circle. And I have a view of the parking lot from my bedroom window. And I think it was, it seems to me it was spring when we were called down here because there was a conflict between the co-op and the developer. And it was about the trucks, the 18-wheelers. And I think at that time, we were talking about 18-wheelers parking on Carroll Avenue to unload the groceries. And I think that was on a Wednesday. And I think on Thursday or Friday, I was awakened by the sound of trucks, and I looked out my bedroom window and I saw an 18-wheeler at the co-op. And I went over there and stood for 45 minutes, between 6:00 and 7:00, while that 18-wheeler was parked in the middle of the parking lot, unloading stuff and carrying it into the co-op. And in the, at the same time, during the time that one 18-wheeler was unloading goods, I think there were three to four box trucks that came and went in the same lot. I think there is a pretty serious misunderstanding or lack of understanding about what we're talking about, what we're talking about, the space for an 18-wheeler and the additional four, on that morning, there were three or four box trucks coming and going at the same time. They all take up a certain amount of space, and it's not equivalent to the Ace Hardware. And we could also talk about what we've, some of us observed about the Ace Hardware trucks delivering in Old Tacoma. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? One second, Mr. Lovelace. We'll let Mr. Williams go first, and then you can go.
Thank you. Bruce Williams, 326 Lincoln Avenue. First, I want to say, as I've said before, I think you should vote for the 30-day extension for the LOI. I want to make sure that everybody understands, I know you all do and many people do, but the letter of intent is a non-binding agreement. It doesn't lock things in. It's dealing with things like concept drawings, which is what has been produced now, which is what was produced at the beginning of this process, with the various developers submitting concepts. They are not planned, you know, planned documents that you do permits off of, that you've signed contracts on, concepts only. So, anybody who's pinning any hopes on saying that because somebody presented a concept drawing at some point in the process, that that's what has to be followed. I just would hope that with the 30-day extension, that the co-op and NDC can come together and agree on this next interim step that's non-binding, that gets the co-op down the road to being the anchor tenant, which I think is what the community wants. And I think NDC has been doing a great job of coming up with things that could try and make this happen. And I will say that when Keith Kozlov talked, I found myself in agreement with just about everything he said, so I want to associate myself with his comments. Thank you.
Mr. Lovelace, why don't you go now?
Okay, this is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I want to thank Tababu for coming up and saying it like it is. It's a dream for all of us. It's not just one or two people in Tacoma Park who's going to have that. I'd like to see Tababu's coffee shop open up right there in the heart of the junction. I'd like to see it. I haven't had a cup of coffee in over 12, 13 years now. And I want my first cup of coffee to be the first cup of coffee served in the Tacoma Junction by Tababu. He's a great man. Another thing is, is I'd like to wish you people a happy recession. LC is on the 11th. And also, I want to see if I can get some information on what the plan is for getting volunteers for the Tacoma Park Folk Festival. We can't keep dawdling on, time is a passing. And also, while we're out, we're going to be having demonstrations and stuff about violence and stuff like that, and about Donald Trump's policies, I want to see people come out to our demonstrations, but I don't want to see violence. If they want to come to our demonstrations, fine, but leave the violence at home. We're not down there to throw bottles and rocks at people who are not even throwing anything at us, never mind it. If they do throw something at us, I am not intending on throwing anything back. That could turn it into a bloodbath. I went through that already, 30 years ago. And I don't wish this on anybody, even if they don't support us. I don't wish this on anybody. So, please, stem the violence. When you come out to greet us, no matter where you are, we've got to have the policy of non-violence in our minds. And anyway, I want to tell you people, bring your children out, bring your friends out, it's a great learning experience in government and in civil rights and in our country's constitution, freedom of speech. Don't let anyone take that away. And thank you very much for coming out and speaking up, Tababu. The first thing I was thinking of is, "We have a dream," Luther King said. And I remember one time I heard some kid in school say, "Nothing stinks worse than a dead-rotting dream." And we cannot let that happen to Tababu or anybody else. This is a city for all of us. Thank you for letting me share. God bless us all and have a happy holiday. Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Next, Ken.
Hi, ma'am. Captain Greg Smith, I think we have to speak.
I'll keep it quick. When I testified last spring, I expressed my concern that no traffic study had been presented for review by the council or the public. I still have that concern. I don't think it's fair to say that the, that the co-op has been operating in bad faith when simply, this is a business that has been in this space for a while, has been in this town for longer, they've studied the issues, they have a sense of what's workable for them. If they've been presented with alternatives that they think are unworkable, it's their right and responsibility to say so and to offer their reasons and then to offer alternatives if they can. But this is an intersection that doesn't work very well already. It's pretty unsafe. I walk and bike there very often. I've nearly been clipped there probably a dozen times. I have been clipped in downtown Tacoma Park. When I say clipped, I mean hit by a car on my bike. It's not fun, it's a little scary for the driver and the biker, and I think we need the traffic and safety studies sooner rather than later, before anybody can make a decision at all. And I think that that information ought to be on the table for the council and the public to review. Talking about intensifying usage at an intersection, it already doesn't work very well and is unsafe in many ways. So, I hope you'll grant the 30-day extension at least, let them keep talking, but let's get the traffic and safety studies done and see what, see how things shake out. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Love it.
Hi, good evening. Fred Feinstein, Sycamore Avenue. First, before I say anything, I want to express a really sincere thanks to this council, particularly the mayor and our representative, Rizzi, for your efforts to bring this community together after a disaster of an election result that has deeply frightened and concerned this community. Your efforts are very much appreciated, and I want to thank you for that. This is the first time that I've appeared before you. I think I've been here just about every meeting that's considered this question, but I'm now a board member of the co-op, just elected, taken the seat within the last few days. But as a board member, I don't think my perspective has changed very much. As all the times that I have appeared here, a central concern to me has always been the develop, to encourage the development and support the co-op and its desires to expand, and that's certainly still the case. I do remain frustrated that the co-op and NDC have not been able to come to an agreement to accomplish that. I want to express the idea that, to take on this notion that the co-op hasn't acted in good faith, but I think Marilyn has really covered that quite well. I've been trying to follow it closely. I am aware that at one point, NDC asked the co-op to come up with a proposal, which they did at considerable expense. Apparently, NDC was not able to accept it because they said it didn't leave enough space for commercial development, but they weren't able to specify exactly how much development space they needed. I really don't know why there are some perceptions within the community that the co-op hasn't been acting fairly. Perhaps they should be provided some more space on the official website so that their views can get up. I don't know. But I want to make one final point, that as a longtime resident of the city, my other concern about this development beyond the co-op is the effect, as we've just heard, on the issue of traffic. The junction is already a problematic bottleneck for traffic in our city. Everyone here has experienced it, backs up from downtown to New Hampshire Avenue. Everyone here has experienced it, backs up from downtown to New Hampshire Avenue. And what NDC is proposing is a substantial expansion of commercial space beyond the Co-op expansion. Every inch of that parking lot will now be dedicated to commercial use. And I can't, I mean, this can't help but bring more activity, and my concern is more traffic. I still hope that the Co-op and NDC can reach an agreement that meets the Co-op needs of this community, but if it doesn't, there are other alternatives. And their altern, those alternatives would meet Tababu's concerns, which I certainly also very much support being met. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Hardwick. I'm president of the board of the Co-op. Just wanted to make a few clarifications on the comparisons with ACE Hardware. So ACE has their own warehouse and they do not need to worry about food spoilage. ACE controls their truck delivery, which includes the frequency of those deliveries, the timing of the deliveries, and the inventory. The Co-op has no control over the delivery schedule. And as you've heard, the Co-op, yes, receives deliveries from 18-wheelers, but then also from a myriad of other suppliers as well. The delivery of mulch, as we heard, one day a week, is not the same and cannot be compared with deliveries every day, which also must maintain food safety requirements. They're just not the same thing. We have deliveries from 18-wheelers every day of the week, and as I said, we have no control over that delivery schedule. Thank you.
Any other comments this night on our voting item?
Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue, Vice President of the Co-op. And all of you people looking and saying, "Oh, jeez, him again." The International City County Management Association has a webpage on business development listing a number of issues for retaining businesses. We're happy to note that our city manager and assistant manager are members of ICMA, which shows how they are a credible professional organization. The following information, some verbatim, comes from the ICMA webpage. For many years, business retention as a strategy for job creation has clearly been superior to business attraction. If incentives are used at all, they should be made available to existing firms as well as to new prospects. Government should place business retention efforts ahead of business attraction. Business retention strategies make sense for a variety of reasons. Existing firms are important assets, are the current employers, and are taxpayers. Retention requires less speculation than attraction. The business has developed attachments and loyalties in the community. Packages to induce firms to stay and expand might be viewed as rewards for that loyalty. Inducements to attract new firms may be perceived by existing firms as signals that they are either taken for granted or have less value than the newcomers. This ends the ICMA information. Carrier just got $7 million in government retention incentives in Indiana. Our state has a Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development to create, attack, retain, and expand businesses in Maryland. We've heard that the city should not put a finger on a scale for an existing business. Well, so far, the city has given the Co-op only an opportunity to negotiate. If negotiations fail, the LDA states only one assurance, reasonable accommodation for access, for loading of deliveries, and customer parking, which is going to be there in the new development anyway. We've received no incentives from the city. We've received no physical infrastructure modifications, or energy resources, or special tax incentives. Nor have we asked for anything from the city except what it will take to allow us to continue to offer our services to the community. An opportunity to safely receive products, minimal business disruption, and adequate parking, which will be required no matter what. We've received nothing at all. In fact, for our use of the junction parking lot, including parking spaces and loading area, we've paid the city over a quarter of a million dollars in the last 11 years. And in the last 18 years, we have paid the city over $319,000 with just under $22,000 this year alone. And at this very moment, you're buying your Christmas trees on property that we have rented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments this evening on our voting item?
Hi, I'm Bill Simmons. I live on Elm Avenue. And I was a little hesitant to say anything, but the one guy that has been involved in this even less than I has given me some reason to voice my concern. I live a few blocks away from this intersection and I, I can see what a traffic snarl it already is. What concerns me is, you know, off the top of my head, I don't think this lay-by unloading provision is a deal breaker. It sounds like it potentially could work, but to have a 30-day extension for these negotiations without having the traffic study first doesn't, doesn't really make a lot of sense. I mean, I would urge you to do the 30-day extension, but it might take longer to really resolve these issues. In the meantime, I think the council needs to mentally prepare itself, despite all the hard rookie guys have put into this already, to walk away from this deal if genuine agreement cannot be reached between the Co-op and the developer. The Co-op is renting the building separately from this overall development. I mean, they would benefit from the expansion so that they have a genuine interest in coming to a good-faith agreement. But if they can't, you know, the last time I was here was in August when this whole period of negotiations started for this LOI. And it's disturbing to see that these two main participants in this deal can't reach an agreement up until now.
That is.
And what does that pretend for the actual development period, you know, working together through the construction, all that other stuff? It's possible that accommodations can't be reached, even though it's in both sides' interest to do it. And, you know, you can go ahead and vote for the 30-day extension, but it seems like this traffic study has critical data and needs to be, you know, pursued as part of this. And, and if agreement can't be reached, we should start over. Thank you.
Any other public comments on the voting item?
Hello, my name is Carter Doherty. I live at 6 Crescent Place in Ward 1. You've heard plenty from our Mary Benn of Rablazas, so I'm not going to dwell. I just wanted to urge you, take the 30-day option if you think it's, it's helpful, but then hold the vote in early January on whether to authorize NDC to seek another anchor tenant. And that you should mentally prepare for rather than walking away from the contract. This is the responsibility of the council. You've invested time and money into it, and we certainly hope and expect that you will carry it out. As for the highway, the State Highway Administration and the traffic issues, you know, I'm all for trying over the holidays, over 30 days, but I think we should calibrate expectations about what can be reasonably expected additionally from the State Highway Administration in 30 days. And finally, I would say we should also, you know, pay good attention to the business continuity issues of the Co-op if they aren't the anchor tenant. That's, you know, that's, that's been in the, the council resolutions and we should stick with it. I wanted to conclude by quoting someone, this is the first for me, who identifies himself on the Tacoma Park Listserve as Super Spy Luke Colorado. Anyone know him? Anyway, he had a response to Rachel Hardwick's comment on the Listserve, which was interesting because, you know, Bobby Anderson mentioned the, the numbers of what the city has been paid for the use of the Co-op, for the use of the parking lot, which worked out to about, seemed to be about 2,000, maybe a little more, per month. And as Super Spy Luke Colorado observed, if that huge lot is only generating less than 2K per month in income for the city, then they really need to hurry up and develop it. 2,000 a month won't get you much more than an apartment around here. Even super spies apparently need a good apartment. So, thank you.
Any other public comments tonight on our voting item? Then we'll turn to public comments on non-Tacoma Junction items. Does anyone have any thoughts on something other than Tacoma Junction this evening?
Apparently not.
No? All right, then we will move on then to council comments. And I'll just remind my colleagues that we are spending the rest of the evening talking about the redevelopment at Tacoma Junction, so if you have other comments, yes, Council Member Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share that I went to a holiday performance by the Tacoma Park Community Band last evening, and it was fantastic. It was at the Franklin Apartments. It was a great performance with both Christmas and Hanukkah music and was attended by over 50 people. It was excellent, and I really appreciate the Tacoma Park Band going out and doing this for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? No? All right, I will turn it over to our city manager. Any comments this evening?
I have a few. I'm not going to go through the list that I've left for council in detail. I do want to note that sidewalk work is occurring at Philadelphia and Maple State Highways. Contractor has returned. We're still not sure what's going on, but we're hopeful that the work will actually get completed this time. I do want to note that also, Councilmember Coburn mentioned the concern about having leaf collection on Small Business Saturday, and we do try to work around major events and we miss that, and we won't in the future. I do want to...
I just mentioned there's a couple of other things like that happening in the coming weeks.
We know, and there's, and unfortunately, we can't handle all of them, but we, we certainly try to keep it in mind that people try to do holiday purchasing, and we don't like to mess it up with leaf collection. I do have a number of answers in this written documentation to Councilmember Mail for questions that he's asked in last week, including a number of statistics related to some of our web use and social media outreach, and I'm happy to follow up on those at any time. I want to note that this Friday, we have a community coffee with the mayor and Councilmember Siemens and some of us as well. At 8:00 AM on Friday, in the Deauville Apartments, it's open to all, and we find those to be very useful and nice occasions to meet people. I want to acknowledge that the city's plastic bag ban went into effect on December 1st, and we still have more outreach and education activities to do over the next 90 days before I believe we should start issuing citations. Nevertheless, I've been feeling good that we've had very good media attention, and I think that that's starting to get the word out. One thing that has been asked a couple times has been that the, that the city manager and city council discuss some employee benefit issues such as family leave, minimum wage issues. I do want to acknowledge publicly that we're going into negotiations with our two collective bargaining unions starting next week. And while we're doing the negotiations, we don't have those kind of conversations in public. We do need to focus on the negotiations. We have a community police academy, and it's a really good opportunity for residents to learn what the police department does and some of the activities that they're involved in and issues of safety. The next round of the community police academy will begin on January 4th and end on March 8th. It's a, a weekly program. And one of the exciting things is also with the police department is that, particularly because Principal Renee Johnson of Blair helped make some coordination so that the Police Explorer Program could be advertised to students there, we now have 35 youths signed up for our Police Explorer Program, and we're very pleased with that. And I want to give a shout out to Ms. Johnson, our principal. And on a holiday schedule, we'll be closed on, from 12:30 on Friday, December 23rd through Monday, December 26th for the Christmas holiday, but the library will be closed all day on Friday and the 23rd, and then will be closed again two days over the New Year's holiday.
Great, terrific. And I have one request, sorry, that came in from folks on the Safe Roadways Committee. If there's a way we could pester bike share regarding the Tacoma Junction bike share, there were no bikes again this morning at 8:00 AM. And if there is some way that we could give the committee or other residents the context to bug them themselves as well, we should do that. So. Great, any other questions for the city manager? All right, then I think we will move on to our work session. So the way we're going to do it tonight is first have a discussion of the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, and I think we have representatives from, or I'm going to first turn it over to the deputy city manager, is that correct?
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll make this very brief, but about 128 days ago now, on August 1st, the city and neighborhood development company executed a development agreement, and the development agreement stated that, stated the expectation that within 120 days, NDC would submit a letter of intent outlining the outcome of negotiations between them and the Co-op regarding the Co-op's expansion as part of the development project. At the end of 120 days, if a letter of intent was not delivered to the city, the council would have a few options to consider, and that's what we're doing tonight. Those options include providing NDC with an additional 30 days to try to negotiate an LOI with the Co-op, requiring, that's the first option section. The second option would be requiring NDC to begin seeking another anchor tenant, which they would have 18 months to do. And the third option is to terminate, to terminate the agreement with NDC and the city pay NDC up to $75,000 for out-of-pocket expenses that they've incurred during the, during the, the time that they've been working to, to get to a letter of intent. Tonight, we have NDC representatives here, and they're going to be presenting an overview of progress made towards the development of an LOI. They'll be sharing some information on the concepts designed during those negotiations and some of the back and forths and trade-offs. And then there will be an opportunity for NDC to participate with the council in a back-and-forth discussion about their presentation. So, without further ado, unless council has any questions about that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Adrian Washington, I believe is giving the presentation from NDC.
Thank you very much, city council, citizens of Tacoma Park, and members and management of the Co-op. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk to you tonight. I have to say, starting out, that I want to really just say that I've really enjoyed working with the council, the city staff, the many community members I've met, and, you know, I've really enjoyed my interactions with the Co-op. You know, I heard a lot of sort of heat in some discussions today, and maybe it's just a symptom of the election we went through, but, you know, I heard words like, you know, distrust and animosity and disrespect, and, you know, I don't feel those things. You know, I greatly respect that accomplishment that the Co-op has made in creating a thriving business. You know, I created the business too. I know how hard it is, and so I greatly respect you. I have no animosity towards you. I like all of you. I've met, I've spent a lot of time with you all, spent a lot of time one-on-one with Marilyn. I like you all very much. I don't distrust you. I believe your motives. I believe that you feel sincerely the way you feel. Your beliefs are strong. You operate at a grocery store I have not, and so I've always taken everything that you've said at face value. I still do, and I have not entered into our talks with that. You did use the word frustrating, and I, I do agree with that one. It has been a frustrating process. It's been a lot of work, and sometimes when... It's been a lot of work, and sometimes when people don't see the eye-to-eye, it can be frustrating, and so I do share that. So, you know, in the spirit of your remarks, I will not try to print any fake news out. I will try to, you know, provide facts. Obviously, the facts as I see them, but I will try to as fact as much as possible. I'll try to provide clarity, and I'll try to get everyone in the community at least to understand how we feel, what we think should be done on Tacoma Junction site. So what do we want to do tonight? I want to take you through our preferred development plan. Obviously, we published it, and we've been transparent. We tried to put as much information to the public as possible, but I haven't really had a chance to really explain it, you know, to everyone in person, and so I want to take you through it and why we think this is the best plan for everyone, for the co-op, for the city, and for our own interest. There's some reasons why people may not be able to do the developed, the preferred plan, or it may not be possible, and so we have an alternative. An alternative that can be entered into by all parties. It isn't as good as our preferred plan, but we still support it. We think it would be a win for the city, and so I'll take you through that. I want to talk about the issue of loading. Loading, I think one of the citizens said, has been the Gordian knot of this, and I like that phrase, and I think it is. So I want to spend a little bit of time on loading and give you our perspective on the loading issue and why we came to the choices we did. And I'll take you through our assessment, and again, I'll say it is our assessment of the other plans. The co-op's plan, which they did, they worked hard, they presented to us. I want to take you through that. This is the plan that does have a loading dock, and I want to give you our assessment of that. And then there's the plan that has been put out, you know, as sort of the, as the beginning, sort of the common sense plan, the Co expands West, is what the plan I'm calling it, and I'll talk to you about that and take you through that. And then finally, we'll talk about, you know, the phrase, where do we go from here? So let's start with the existing site and remind us of kind of what we're looking at. And when I look at this site, sort of two thoughts come to mind. You know, one is that, you know, from a development perspective, from, you know, a city perspective, you know, it's a pretty big parking lot in the middle of your beautiful city, and it doesn't generate a lot of taxes, it's not that attractive, and I think that the reason we all came together, the reason why the city solicited developers, they thought that something better could be done with this site. But also, I look at that, and I recognize, you know, Marilyn, Abdi, Bob, all of you, that this is your home, and you've been here many years, and you've made a successful business here. And so everything we've done has respected that, has treated that as something that is the centerpiece of our development, and we've always kept that in mind, and that has been our objective. So let's step back. There's been a lot, as I said, there's been a lot of heat, a lot of back-and-forth, a lot of strong passion. And so in putting this presentation together, I went back to the original Tacoma Junction Task Force and the project principles of the RFP, and I thought we should remind ourselves of what it is that we're trying to accomplish. So some of the principles were that we wanted to support independent businesses. I'm looking forward to that cup of coffee myself. I could probably use one right now.
Lovitz.
Alright, I've been wanting one of those Lovitz. I've been waiting to get one of those, so my night is complete. Thank you, thank you. Wanted to improve the aesthetic appeal of the commercial district. We didn't want to have just a big parking lot there. We wanted to have something that looked nice. We wanted to promote additional quality redevelopment in areas, so we could have a great downtown area. Wanted to provide amenities, so that people, citizens here talked about walking here, would have something to walk to. They want to walk to the co-op and shop. That's great. We want that to continue. We want to be able to walk to other things and enjoy those as well. Wanted to have community space. Wanted to have a gathering space where people could come and, you know, not being part of any particular commercial establishment, but just a community space where people could gather. Environmental sustainability, something that's very important to our company. I know is very important to your town, and so it's something that we thought could be a showcase place for doing that. Public parking options, you know, wasn't just something that, you know, people came up with, you know, for the co-op or for the business, that it was part of the original plan was to have public parking options, not just for the businesses directly there, but for the navigating business. And finally, you know, as I think a couple people talked about is that, you know, this is a key piece of public property. Cities need tax revenue to pay for schools and police and all those type of things. And so putting this on a property back in the tax rolls, having businesses there that would pay sales tax and property tax would be very important. So these were the guiding principles. And so we took all those principles, and we worked very hard. We went through many concepts, and we come up with what we thought is a plan that would accomplish all of those. It would be a, you know, not a large structure. It's a two-story structure, so not something huge. It would have a space for a expanded, brand-new co-op. It would be a fabulous place for the co-op to be. They can lease it for as long as they'd like. We'd love to have them for ten and as many years as possible. It would provide for other businesses as well, that it would have a, you know, a, you know, event space on the second floor. It could have offices. It could have restaurants. It could have other type of shops. So it'd be a complete community center. Let me go through a bit of the detail of what it looked like. The ground floor would have a brand-new, just to... I realize that members of council can't see it, but the-
Yeah, we can see it.
No, if you would, if you use the cursor.
Uh-huh. I'm scared to use the cursor, because then things are all messed up. Alright, so it would be a brand-new co-op that would go there on the city-owned site, and I'll talk about why we decided to do that. Could have other businesses there here as well. It would have a reuse, reconditioned use of the Turner Building on the ground floor. Would have green space there, public gathering space as well, attractive streetscape design around that, and of course, the famous lay-by line, which I will talk about in a second. What type of business would go there? We see a variety of business that would be great, you know, compliments to the co-op, perhaps a gallery, perhaps a, you know, a goods store, a home furnishing type of store. I think a restaurant would certainly be a use there that would be widely used by everyone else. And of course, there's that wonderful coffee shop that we're all talking about. And so these are just some of the ideas we could have if we expand the junction site enough to allow other businesses besides just the co-op. The upper level, one of the things we would do is that we provide some of the space for the co-op that is not their, you know, their shopping floor, but office space for their staff could go on an upper level, very attractive to use. There could be office space there as well, and event space could go on the upper level. On the, on the area where the Turner Building would be, would be additional space, perhaps a two-story restaurants and space there, a nice terrace there. So it's a very attractive sort of second-floor plan. And then the parking that we talked about, and so by using the entire site, we could get about a hundred, perhaps even more spaces in a single, single-level underground garage. So provide the parking that we talked about and that. So I think this is a great plan that would benefit the all the community, but, you know, what would our plan do for the co-op? I mean, that's the source of contention here. That's the source of the strife. So what would it do for the co-op? It would not provide a loading dock. So I'm going to say it upfront, this plan does not provide a loading dock. You know, there's a big, you know, set of contention. We've looked at it, we've tried. It would not provide a loading dock, so I want to be very upfront about that. But it would provide a brand-new contiguous store. And the store, you know, would provide advantages, you know, that would be, you know, far, far outweigh the fact that we would not have a loading dock. It would have great layout efficiency, so the chance for the co-op to design completely new layout of the store, wouldn't just be bolting on a sort of an addition to it, moving things around, but a chance for them to do a modern layout that they would design to their specifications, and so provide great efficiencies that would save costs in their operation. Provide energy savings. A brand-new building, again, using most advanced environmental sustainable techniques, would create tremendous energy savings that could not be achieved by, you know, doing one new building and then, you know, bolting it on to the existing Turner Building. An urban farm opportunity. We think this is a very exciting opportunity, and obviously, this would not supply all the food and all the produce that the co-op would need, but it certainly would provide a great sort of augmentation of their wares, a great educational opportunity, great benefit to the community even. So we think this is an exciting opportunity that could be done with a brand-new building. The customer experience would be enhanced. It would be, as I said, a layout that would be extremely efficient. Everything would be new. It'd be a great experience for the city, so I think a great customer. So all these things would, again, far more offset any cost disadvantage by not having a loading dock. Very important. One of the two principles beside the loading issue we talked about was business continuity. By building first, by doing a two-stage development, building a brand-new co-op building, and allowing the co-op to essentially, you know, virtually close one store on one day and open the next morning in another, would allow for business continuity. None of the plans that involve sort of expansion of the Turner Building would do that, and I'll talk more about that as I go forward. Now, there are a couple of issues of that, and again, I've always tried to be transparent about that. One is that, as many people have pointed out, in order to do this plan, it would require the Matthews family, the owners of Turner Building, to either sell or do a long-term lease of their site. I've heard conflicting opinions. We'll talk about that in the question and answer. You know, I've heard at some point, they weren't willing to sell, but I've also heard that they, we've talked to them. They may be open to it. They say they love the co-op. They've been, we've been very clear about that. They love the city, and so if this is in the best interest of the co-op, and if the co-op wants it, there may be opportunity there. And require demolition of Turner Building. I think some people, you know, have, you know, feelings about that. We can talk about that. So again, I wanted to put those issues on the table. We think this plan is in the best interest of everybody, but it does have issues. So let's say we can't do this. What will we do? An alternate plan. And so on the alternate plan, we would still build a new space for the co-op, a brand-new space for the co-op, the same type of advantages as before, but we would leave the Turner Building in place. And so what we'd do is that, once the new space has been built and the co-op has moved over, we could, you know, reposition, reuse Turner Building for alternate use. So this is the second-floor plan. They look very similar, except it's just a little bit smaller, so sort of less space. And the parking below would be obviously a lot smaller, because the building footprint would be only under the city parking lot, not under the Turner site. So how would the alternative plan compare to our preferred plan? It would provide essentially the same benefits to the co-op that our preferred plan would be, would. It would give the layout efficiencies of a brand-new store that's contiguous and designed specifically to the co-op's needs. Provide the same energy savings we talked about. The urban farmer opportunity would still be there. The customer experience would be there. And the business continuity issue, again, would be solved. They'd be able to close one store and open another store the next day. There would be less ground-floor retail, and there'd be significantly less parking than on our preferred plan. So that's a drawback, and so we recognize that. But it's still something that we think would accomplish most of the goals set forth in the task force report and in the RFP. Sorry, let me go back. And the great thing about this plan, and we can talk about the lease, which we have not been provided, is that because this would not involve any sort of, you know, significant, you know, alteration of the exterior, the structure of the Turner Buildings, that we believe that the, you know, either under their existing lease or with the approval of the Matthews family, they'd be, you know, they'd be able to, they'd be able to approve it. The co-op can say yes to this. They can, we can say yes. They can keep it. You can keep your lease. You can sublease it to someone else. You can sublease it to us. You don't have to break your lease. We do, and so you can have your cake and eat it too. So we think there are a lot of benefits to this plan. It gives you less retail, less parking, and it's something that we believe is in the power of the co-op to do and to say yes to. So let me go now to the loading issue. Let's talk about this. As we said, it's been one of the key sticking points, you know, of this contention. And so I want to give you my perspective on this loading plan, loading issue. So here's the existing loading. This is how the co-op looks today, and this was confirmed by Marilyn, and also confirmed in writing by her in terms of the distance. So this is the representation of the Turner Building. This is the parking lot. The trucks drive into here. Back in there, they unload pallets. There is no loading dock right now. So driver comes in, puts a pallet, drops a pallet. He puts it on one of those mechanical pallet movers, takes it here from the back of the truck, comes down, goes in the store. A distance of about fifty-five feet, and this is completely uncovered. This is exposed to the elements. Under our proposed plan, and this is sort of a cutaway of the first floor, here's a lay-by lane, so it is not just, you know, I wanted to make sure everyone understands, it is not parking in Carroll Avenue. The truck comes off of Carroll Avenue. It is not in the traffic lane, and it is in a dedicated area of loading lanes. It's also similar to, you see, sort of a bus stop uses technique as well. The truck would pull in there. It would unload from the back there. The, again, same type of thing. The pallets would be dropped. They would be moved by pallet loader and pulled in there, and this portion would be uncovered, but when you get inside the building envelope, this portion is covered. So it is longer. It's eighty-five feet versus fifty-five feet. Eighty-five feet, which is mostly covered, fifty-five feet, which is uncovered. It is a little bit longer, you know. I'm not a grocery expert, but, you know, I've, you know, and we can talk about this more, you know. I think this is a little bit longer. It's admittedly a bit more cost, but I just frankly don't understand why this is the way the co-op does it, and it's permissible, and this is something that will just kill the co-op and do it. I just, you know, I've tried to understand it. I don't understand it. It seems very similar to me and not, you know, a totally different way of doing business. Alright, let me... So, as Marilyn said in her presentation, the co-op did, at their own expense, develop a plan that we suggested that they tell us how they'd like to do it. This is what the co-op had proposed. Under their plan, trucks would come in into a loading area there off of Carroll Avenue. They would come from the opposite lane because of the amount of space needed. Come in, they could come here, turn around there, and back up into there. And we assessed this plan with our traffic engineer. We found that it really needed a little bit wider. I think you can kind of even sort of see from the size of the truck that to turn this truck carefully, unless you were an expert, you needed a bit more space. But, I mean, essentially, we saw this, and so from the co-op suggested plan, the, you know, Turner Building would stay. They would expand here, and they'd leave a little bit of retail leftover. That'd be about forty-five hundred square feet. We really estimate this about thirty-five hundred square feet. So essentially, you could have a co-op, there's an expansion, and, you know, maybe like that nice coffee shop we all talked about. That would be it. This is kind of a, sort of looking at our preferred plan versus the co-op plan, you can see that ours would provide much more retail space compared to the co-op plan. It's really, you know, it's a very different plan. So if you compare the co-op's proposed plan to our preferred plan, it does not provide the operational layout efficiencies. You're bolting on this addition to the existing building. Does not provide sort of the energy savings that you would have under our preferred plan. Does maybe, can you do the urban farm on the little expansion area there? Maybe, so, but certainly not the full-fledged one we talked about. Enhanced customer experience, provides significantly less ground-floor retail. So we're talking, you know, almost, not quite two to one, but, you know, a healthy difference between the two. Much less parking, and it'll be substantially more costly to build. The cost of, you know, retro, of the structural work needed to knit these buildings together. One factor that's very important is that by having the trucks come into, remember, there's a parking lot below this, so to have these large eighteen-wheelers come in off the street, all the space here, this entire space here would have to be a much stronger concrete deck than it would be, you know, needed, because under our preferred plan, there's no trucks or, you know, substantial trucks coming in here, and so it adds substantial cost to the project. You know, it provides, you know, in my opinion, a, you know, a much less attractive street frontage. Essentially, you have, you know, the existing building there, the expansion, a small store here, and then a big building operation right there. So, you know, it's a much less of a attractive street frontage, much less of a pedestrian experience. experience. It'll have a larger traffic, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about the traffic and the safety of unloading cars. If you can see, from the way the trucks come in, if this truck is coming west, in order to enter, because of the truck turning radius, you'll have to come here, so, this truck will have to come here, cross a lane of traffic, block all this traffic coming in while it comes in, comes in there, when it comes out, the same thing on the other side. The truck will go, have to go all the way across two lanes of traffic, and so, that provides, you know, a lot more, you know, traffic, a lot more stoppages, safety impacts of crossing a road, bicycles, pedestrians, trucks. So, you know, having 18-wheelers coming to, you know, your town is, it's an impact, but this will provide far more of an impact than ours would. And then, you know, and I think this is extremely important, because it's been one of the things that the, that the co-op has felt very strongly about, this requires a substantial business shutdown time in order to do this. In order to, you know, take an existing store, and it's, and a much older store, with, you know, sort of freezers and loading along this edge there, you don't just build this new thing and come in and knock down a wall and open the next day. You've got to tie in, first of the structural issues, you know, we haven't been able to explore the structure, but it's an older building, clearly, it's going to take a lot of work to do that, you've got an electrical system to tidy, you're not going to have like one electrical system on one building, one electrical system on the other, you've got to knit them together to make them work, you've got to have plumbing that works together, you've got to have lighting, you've got to have, you know, just the store fixtures themselves. I mean, you know, I would think in the co-op's expansion, they don't want to just sort of take their old store and just do something different, that they want to knit together the operations, and so, this could take weeks, this could take months, it would be disruptive, it will be a business shutdown, there's no way to do this with just sort of overnight, so it requires substantial shutdown time. And then finally, we talked about, you know, the owners of Turner Building, the Matthews, and, you know, what they want to do, what they're going to do. You know, what do they want to sell? In order to tie these buildings together, you can't just have one building next to another building, you know, you've got to have agreements between the two, you've got to have easements, you've got to have ties, you've got to have tax combinations, you've got to have utility lines, things, all these things together, and so, you know, the idea that, you know, the Turners could just, you know, the Matthews could just, sort of, just do this, and that the co-op can just have an existing lease, is just not true. It's almost like one building, and so, the Matthews would either have to sell, or they'd have to have a significant infringement of their property rights in order for the structural stuff to work, in order for the systems to work, in order for our financial, for our lenders to work. It's, it's just, you know, it's just not a thing that can be done under the existing lease. It's going to have to be a major agreement, if not a sale, to the overall development Finally, I want to go through, you know, one of the, you know, concepts that's been talked about, well, you know, why can't the co-op just sort of expand to the west? And so, under this concept, this is sort of similar to our plan, our preferred plan, but just sort of, instead of having a brand-new store for the co-op, it would be an expansion. And so it has, you know, really, some of the same issues that we talked about before, in that, you know, it doesn't provide the operational layout efficiencies, the energy savings, urban farm, customer experience, provide less ground-floor retail, provide less upper-level retail, less parking, it'll be more costly to build, again, with all those kind of concepts of tying the two buildings together. Again, would require a substantial shutdown for, you know, for the co-op, months perhaps. And again, same type of thing, you can't build this new building next to it, tie the two buildings together without some sort of substantial, either a sale, or some type of substantial property rights infringement of the Matthews. So, you know, you just can't do it with us, it's going to have to be a partnership with the Matthews. So that's, you know, that's our plan, that is why we are proposing the preferred plan or the alternate plan, because it's better for the city, it is better for the co-op, and it is doable. All right, so we talked a lot about plans, and so I wanted to change things a bit, I wanted to talk about something else, something that has come about recently that I'm very excited about. We have a, you know, we've talked a lot about the ground floor and the co-op and all, but there are other things going on in the building, and we're very excited to announce that we have reached an agreement, we have a signed letter of intent with the Ability Project, it's a fantastic project, it'll be a great addition to your city, a great addition to our development, it's a wonderful project, it's very dear to me, and I, really not the person to talk about it, so I have John Bogowski from the Ability Project, and I'm going to invite him up to talk about what he does and what he hopes for.
Thank you. Well, I know we've talked, we were a bidder, so we have talked about the Ability Project before. Before, I'll describe it briefly, but first, well, the Ability Project is, tries to create a community space for adults with special needs and the rest of the community, but to give them a safe place that they can get to on their own or with help, that to sort of fight off the social isolation that happens with them, including my son. So this is, I'm a parent, and, in the Ability Project. But the one thing, so, that's what it is, we, I know we've talked about it at length to here, but I want to take this opportunity to thank the council, the mayor, the previous mayor, and all the people of Tacoma Park for welcoming the Ability Project throughout, you know, we were concerned that there'd be a little NIMBYism here, because it's adults with special needs, and we have seen none of that. We've, it's been, none of that, it's been completely welcoming to our mission and our people and our kids, and so we're very thankful for that. We're excited about the opportunity, we've always been excited about Tacoma Park, it's a walkable community, our folks don't drive, by and large, they take public transit when they get places, so, we're excited, we're excited to be part of it, and thank you.
Thank you, John. So next steps, where do we go from here? We've worked long and hard, we've had a lot of discussions, we've looked at the different options, we have our opinions, obviously, the co-op has their opinions, we can't go much further, there's not much more to study. We've studied this thing left, right, sideways, upside down, ever was to go. So, I'm asking, you know, the co-op to tell us, you know, what they want to do, you know, do you want to work with us on this project? You know, if you do, which plan do you want to pursue? If we can come together, we come together, it involves the Matthews to some extent, and so, what I propose, that if we can come together on a direction that all of us, us, the co-op, the city, we should jointly approach the Matthews, we've got to see if the selective plan's acceptable to them. It may not be, and so, you know, it may not be any point in doing any of these if they won't accept. They've got to be full participants, they've either got to sell, they've got to agree to tie their buildings together and all that entails, if they're not willing to do that, then our options are limited, and, you know, but we do have a great alternative option to do in that case. I think we can do that, and I think, you know, one of the citizens talked about trust, and, you know, it's not been established, and I've worked very hard to establish your trust, and it, you know, I, hopefully I've made some progress, but there's still ways to go, but if we have that, the LOI can quickly be negotiated and executed, and I'll tell a little story about that. You know, the Ability Project had been a bidder, you know, and had been involved, and we talked to them early on, and I really, you know, to be honest, it really sort of stopped thinking about them. And there's an organization called KINE, it's Kids Enjoy Exercise Now, and I've been a supporter of them for a number of years, and so about, really, literally about a month ago, I was at their annual dinner, and I sat down at a table, and like you usually do to go to dinner, you go introduce yourself to, you know, the people at the dinner, and, at the table, and, you know, I shook hands, I said, "Hi, I'm Adrian Washington," and Matt Hurson, who is, you know, one of the leaders of the Ability Project, says, "I know who you are." And he's, I said, "I'm with the Ability Project," and I was like, so we started talking, we talked for about a half an hour at the table, and at the end of that half hour, we shook hands, and we literally shook hands on the deal. And I asked him to send me a LOI, he sent me an LOI about a week later, lawyer looked at it, we made a couple of adjustments, sent it back to them, and, you know, here we are, less than a month later, with the partner on the project that is great for us from a social mission, great for us from a business, so, with trust, and, you know, and, you know, if anyone to think that this is like some kind of naive, kind of, you know, just, you know, guy who, you know, just, you know, kind of nonprofit-type of guy, you know, Matt's a managing director at highest interest, one of the leading real estate developers in the world, I mean, he is a very sophisticated guy, so it was just really a matter of seeing that our interests and their interests were, you know, were linked, we didn't have all the details figured out, but we thought it would be good for them, it'd be good for us, we talked about the issues, we talked about the problems, and we resolved to work it out. And so, things can come together like that if people trust, and if they have the same, you know, motives in mind. So, in conclusion, I'm coming back to the site that we had here, and I think that, I think I heard one of the citizens here tonight say that, you know, we can leave this the way it is, and, you know, if that's what people want, then that's pretty easy to do. But I think that the vision, the plan that we are presenting would be a great thing for the city, a great thing for the co-op, and it'd be something I'd be very proud and excited to be a part of, and I want to make happen, and so, this is what we'd like to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question, and you might be surprised to hear it, it's about the loading area. But you have that, the truck lay-by, and then there's the little alley that goes back to the side door of the proposed addition or expansion. If it was not an 18-wheeler, if it was a smaller truck, would you envision that backing up that alleyway, or would it also unload in the truck lay-by?
No, we have a separate loading area for smaller trucks, and that would actually would drive into the premises, because you don't have sort of the turning issues, you know, that you have with the bigger ones.
You emphasized that there is no loading dock.
No, I'm sorry, there is no loading dock for 18-wheelers. There is a loading dock for smaller trucks.
Okay, so the, the kind of stalling point here is the 18-wheelers.
Yes, let me see if I can, okay, it's going to take a while. So would it be possible, we have another, do you guys control this? We have a, thank you, we have a less automated one, so I can go back and forth. Do I hit one of these buttons?
What are you trying to do?
The experts are coming your way.
All right, please help me. Can you still put a slideshow?
Requires two experts.
Put back a slideshow.
Is this one?
Yeah. All right.
We needed this.
All right, okay, so, there could, the, so hopefully, hopefully after all this, I'm answering your question. So smaller trucks could be loaded and delivered on this part of the plan, this would be the entrance for the, you know, car parking down to lower level.
Adrian, we can't see.
Okay, let's try that, okay. All right, here we go. All right, so, smaller trucks here, loading and delivery, and then 18-wheelers here in the lay-by.
And then they just offload and use a
And then, yeah.
Fork lift or a hand forklift.
For the 18, yeah, well, it's, they're motorized, yeah. And actually, we've done, you know, we've gone there, we've done videos, and so we have studied it, so we can also supply the council with that.
Okay, and then, one other question regarding the loading dock, and that is, it's possible, I could foresee that more than one truck might show up at the same time. Is there any place for those trucks to stand by until they can offload?
No, there would not be, I mean, there's no place, it's a small site, there's no place for two 18-wheelers on this plane.
What about two small trucks? One would back in, and the other would stand in the truck lay-by?
Well, yeah, certainly one could be in a lay-by, and one could be in the loading area, in the inside loading area.
Okay, that's it for now, but I will come back.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Washington, for your presentation. Adrian, is in the proposal here, is there any storage for the co-op?
We have not been able to get advanced to the point where we talked about the inside of the co-op, of the new co-op essentially, they're, they've given us their overall space, but they wanted about 10,000 or 11,000 square feet total, and so we've just shown that as a block, and so, what would be the internal storage versus how the store lays out, we don't know at this point.
And what about office space? Are you guys offering office space in the second story for them?
Yes, we thought that'd be, again, and sort of what's the best use of the overall site, ground floor is really where we want the maximum amount of retail to create the experience, both successful for the retail owners as well as for the customers, and so, we thought that office space would not be a good use, and so, we've offered to have the co-op sort of office space be on the upper floor.
This idea of, you know, having deliveries done off-site, and having it trucked over to the club in a smaller panel truck or whatever, have you just talked to any of the warehouse landlords nearby and see if that's even possible, or?
We want you to talk.
Oh. Have you talked to any of the warehouse landlords to see if they would have, if they even have any space available?
No, we've not, I mean, the, we, you know, we offered, we brought that idea up with the co-op, they told us that it was completely impractical, we took them at their word, and so we did not explore it any further.
All right, and then, in this round, my final question is, the business terms of the LOI, have you guys talked to them about rental rates, term of lease, any of those particular issues?
We are certainly flexible on the length of the lease, we're happy for a long-term lease, terms of rates, no, we have, you know, suggested that it would be commercially reasonable, they've never asked us, like, you know, how much that would be, it's just never gotten to that point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Washington, appreciate it. A few questions, and just maybe jumping around a little bit in the different options, just because each of them had things I was uncertain about. So in the third option, which I think you don't prefer, or prefer even less, if that's the way to put it, it was also 56 parking spaces. I was unclear on where the entrance to the parking lot was, can you just clarify that? And I don't know if it's going to be hard to find the relevant slide again.
Yeah, so are you referring to this plan?
No, the, the one
Co-op plan.
The co-op plan?
No, the one
The one after.
No, the hybrid, the rejoining, the expansion to the west.
Expansion to the west.
I'm sorry, I have to go all the way through it.
That's quite all right, okay, well, I'm sorry, that's it, so what's
So, so, the black arrow is for deliveries, but not for parking, so is that one, does the parking come through some other process, or?
We would, we've not had as much time to develop this plan, but the parking would be probably somewhere similar to where the black arrow is, or on this end here.
Okay, so, if you did a version of this, where you have the old building and the new building, and they break through, and it's a unified structure, whether that still remains in the Turner lot, or somehow you control the whole thing, but there's these two different spots, certainly if the Turners retain ownership, the rent levels would probably be different, right? In other words, they've got a 20-year lease, it's probably a pretty favorable lease, you're building a new one, would you expect that your square footage would be higher than the part of it that's in the Turner Building, if you had to say at this point?
I mean, I don't know, I mean, they, they have never shared their lease with us I mean, they, they have never shared their lease with us, I don't know what their lease rate is. You know, it could be lower, could be the same. And also, you know, also, we want to talk about, sort of, sort of isolate on sort of one factor without looking at the broader factor. It may be that they have a lower, you know, lease rate to the new space, but our space could be far more energy efficient.
Well, right, but I guess the reason I'm asking is because then if you build the brand-new building with a turnkey option, so all of the square footage is new, as opposed to some being old, is that a, I mean, I can understand why they might be nervous about maybe paying more rent there.
And I'd be happy to talk to them about it. I mean, I think we need to put everything on the table. We need to put both the lease rate as well as the cost of operation. So, it may be that the new lease rate is a few dollars more. But the energy costs are less, the cost of operations are less, the new customers coming in are more. So, I would look at it as a total business, you know, system.
Right. So, then, with your most preferred plan, which has the lay-by and you're pulling off of Carroll Avenue, and that one has the most additional square footage for retail, I believe, correct? As compared with the second plan that you prefer less, to put it that way. So, even on that second plan, it seemed like you're willing to kind of get by with less retail space, right? So, in other words, the sense I get is that in that one, maybe there's less money for NDC, because there's less retail space. So, if that's true, and if there's concern about the lay-by being really close to the street, it's off the street, but it's close, and people are worried about that, what about just shaving off a little bit more, having the lay-by in a little bit more? Still more square footage than in Plan Two, but maybe that addresses some of the concern about the truck kind of being right out there. Maybe the whole truck could even be covered. Any thought, that's Plan 1A or 2B.
On any plan, I mean, we look at the lay-by. I mean, certainly, we thought that sort of a 10-foot wide lay-by was sufficient, but I mean, if, if that's a concern, and it's got to be 12 feet, I mean, that's, you know, those are small details that we can work out when we come to a meeting of the minds, I mean, and when we work the state highway, and, and so, that, you know, is not a big deal.
Okay.
And also, I just want to, just along those lines, want to remind everyone that this is the first time council is seeing this, this is the first time you've had to present this. As we move forward in the process, there's a whole community input process. So, these kind of questions, do we move the lay-by, does this happen? Again, we have a residents committee that is going to develop the process moving forward. There's going to be a lot of back and forth on that.
And, and just to, to add on to your comments, Mayor, under the development agreement, the council must approve the final site plan. So, even if the council were to allow us to move ahead now or in 30 days, that unless the council, council has another kind of bite at the apple. And so, there's a whole community consultation process we go through, we sort of do it, and then, at the end of the day, if the council feels that the site plan is not acceptable to them, they can kill the deal right then.
Councilmember Mann?
Thank you. In my comments, I'm going to ask about the specific drawings you have, but I think the question should apply generally as those things could, could evolve. So, the first is, there's been some, I think it's a misunderstanding in the community, that the truck lay-by or bay would actually involve the truck parking on the sidewalk or crossing the sidewalk. And my understanding of all your drawings here is that the place where the 18-wheeler is, is separate from the sidewalk access along the street, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, I just, that, I think that's, it came up a few months ago, and I think it just, it got stuck in some folks' mind. The second is, looking at this drawing, but it could be some of the other ones too. You talked about the complexity of the potential relationship with the Turners?
Matthews.
Matthews.
Buildings Turner, Buildings Turner.
I'm going to write that down, with the Matthews. And, and just to give an example, in this drawing, you show the bay as being partly on the, on the Matthews property. So, that's an example of something, presumably you'd have to negotiate that out.
You're talking about the lay-by?
Yeah, lay-by or bay, yeah, yeah, the lay-by.
Is that, is that public space, or is that actually? Okay.
Right.
Agreed.
So, just, just pointing out that, you know, there's, it's, it's probably going to be complicated almost no matter what. I wanted to ask about this drawing and then go back to the one you ran before, but the, my last question on this drawing is, in an arrangement like this, could the financing and the numbers work out to build the, what's labeled as a 5.3 thousand square foot space next to the existing store, and then sell that space to, rather than having NDC own and lease, sell that space to either the Matthews family or the co-op?
Well, first of all, we have no philosophical objection to that. The, the legal impediment to that would be that we are ground leasing the site, so NDC does not own the site. We are essentially tenants, because it has long-term grounds to the city.
It would require both the co-op, the Matthews, and yourself to come to the city and say, the way we want to make this work is to continue to ground lease this portion of the site, but to subdivide and sell the other portion of the site.
That would, that would be doable.
Okay. And I'm just trying to throw this out here partly because I think what you, the company has shown through this process is creativity and flexibility and putting ideas on the table. To the mayor's point, there's a long process to go in terms of finding design, but, but I just wanted to ask that question because the fact that there is a physical separation between the two halves of this drawing suggests you could also have a separate strategy to, to deal with future management of them. Could you go back to the first, the preferred option for me?
Which?
You're very, I think it's your, whatever your first.
I mean, which, the ground floor plan?
Yeah, ground floor. So, on this one, you have one, two, three, four, five, six businesses on the site. And for the small truck, the box truck-sized trucks, you would have up to six businesses getting served by one space for only one truck at a time to come in. They would come in that spot to the right of the yellow arrow. The truck would have to unload, a truck would have to unload to serve the coffee shop, and then that truck would have to leave, and another truck would have to come in to serve the furniture store, and then that truck would have to leave, and then another one would come in and serve the restaurant. That, to me, doesn't seem very practical, given that they would be moving 85 feet or some other distance. So, it seems like you'd have to have your businesses or some other, you know, arrangement there. Am I, am I, am I reading that wrong? Would that be?
Well, you know, two or three responses to that. First of all, sort of, this is sort of a suggested layout. We do not have actual tenants, so it may, in fact, sort of, two would be sort of the smallest you could get there, so it may be sort of only three or four. The loading, you know, is done, there's a service quarter here in the rear that would access that, so, but you're right. I mean, your, your fundamental point is right in that it would require coordination, it's a small site, and so, it would take some thought and some work to, to make it work. But it's certainly something that, you know, we have seen, you know, for other similar-sized ventures done. So, it's, you know, it's some work, but it's certainly doable.
Okay. Just on this, I'm sorry, I just can ask a few more questions, I think they're all pretty sure to answer things. You could continue that service, I guess the service quarter is not big enough for a truck to drive down, but it can continue all the way through. You could have access to the quarter from the Sycamore side as well, if you had space for a small box truck to be, to park there, or to pull out, have, you know, a lay-by area down that street as well.
Yeah, certainly could put a door back there, yeah.
Okay. The, on this drawing, I think with the other one, you showed the 85 feet for the, I think, the proposed path for unloading 18-wheelers, and then versus the 55 feet to get to the loading space or the entrance to the building for, for freight. If it's a new building, if it's a new 8,000-square-foot building, the way you showed it was that the loading would be at the very back of this, of this 8,000-square-foot building. But one could move the door closer to the street if, if, I mean, it changes the layout of the inside of the store to some extent. But you could also move the freight and the food pallets inside.
Yeah, we, we chose sort of the maximum distance under this, so to, to really be fair, but you're right. If the, you know, entrance to the new co-op was here, for instance, it would be potentially even less than 55 feet.
Right. And in terms of the way, at one point, we talked about Union Market, as sort of a configuration stalls and a place that, once you're in the building, you, you are able to move within the building, within the retail, within the building. So, in a configuration like that, where maybe you didn't put the loading for the co-op at the back of the building, but you had it further in the front, if the co-op were also facing into those other retail opportunities in the space, then maybe the fact that the loading or the refrigerators, the storage was on the side here instead of the back might not matter, because a lot of the customers are going to be accessing from this inner portion as well. Am I sort of thinking about that, right, when I've been to Union Market? That's sort of opened my, my mind to think about how you might frame the retail around a space as opposed to around Carroll Avenue being the, being the access. Okay. And then, so, last question on the, on the lay-by. I think of this, the lay-by design as being very similar to the bus bay that's right across the street right now. So, you know, ride on buses, I think it's just ride on buses on Carroll, pull over into a, a space, and then the traffic passes them. And I think that space is actually fairly narrow, it's probably not as wide as you're proposing here. So... They took out, they took out the bay on 410 on Ethan Allen, but if you're in front of the bakery or the dry cleaners, there's a bay right there on Carroll. And so, that's basically what this would look like. I don't, again, I don't know the width, but that's the basic concept of what this would look like on the other side of the street. Am I thinking about that the right way?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess 18-wheelers are a little bit longer than a, than a, excuse me, a bus?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay. Couple feet maybe, but you just, you'd have, you'd have to design it to some standard in terms of pull-in and pull-out distance, which might be longer or shorter than that, that example across the street. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Very interesting. The, you showed the, the plan that was proposed by the architect of the co-op with the 18-wheelers coming in off, off of Carroll Avenue. From, from your point of view, in terms of being able to make a profit on this, you know, make it worth your time and effort to develop this site, is that plan workable from, is it feasible to NDC to, to do it? I mean, notwithstanding the, the additional costs of building it, but in terms of the leasable square feet, so that you can get the rents you need to pay, to, to pay the financing and to realize an income from it?
We do not believe it's feasible. I mean, it is just dedicating too much of the space, and particularly the underground space, to supporting a loading operation. I mean, it's, you know, essentially a expanded co-op with maybe a room for a coffee shop and then a big truck loading dock. And so, you know, no, we do not believe it's economically feasible.
Okay, so that means?
And also, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we did talk about then the extra construction cost of reinforcing the deck above the parking to support the 18-wheelers, which would add significant cost.
Okay. In, in relation to that same plan, you showed the diagram with the trucks coming westbound on Ethan Allen or Carroll Avenue and coming in. Would, would 18-wheelers coming from the opposite direction, coming, heading east on Carroll, from what I saw, they wouldn't be able to turn into that, into that parking or loading? I'm sorry to, this is driving you crazy. I think that might be it. In other words, you're, yeah, with that plan, you're showing a diagram of how a truck traveling westbound on Ethan Allen Avenue.
Sorry. All right.
Yay.
So, first I want to make, this is not our diagram, this is the co-op's architect's.
Oh, okay.
So, we didn't draw the trucks either, that's not our.
Oh, you didn't draw the trucks? They're so cute.
Oh, okay, well, they're nice-looking trucks, yeah.
But how would trucks coming the opposite way get into this? Do you have a?
Well, they come in this way, as I understand it, again, it's not our plan, they come in, this is westbound, so they're on the other side of the street. In order to make, because it's, it's too tight, if you're, if you're coming this way, to make that turn, it's, it's too tight. So, what they're suggesting is you'd come in from the opposite side of the street, come over, cross the lane of traffic, and turn in there.
Okay. In other words, they'd have to back in?
No, they would come in straight. So, they come in, they turn, they go in here, they make this loop. Then they back, once they're inside, then they back into the loading dock here. But then they come straight out, and then they, again, cross the lane of traffic and go back westbound.
My question is, is that if you've got a truck coming from the opposite direction, an 18-wheeler, it would have to pull in all the way across the street toward, point its nose towards Grant Avenue, and then back across two lanes of Carroll to get into that loading dock? Okay? Okay, I just, just wanted to make sure that I was. Yeah, well, yeah, maybe so. I want to ask sort of a, a, a leading question here. Am I, well, let me not get to that. You, you talked about in the original co-op plan of having an addition built to the west, you said, well, it would be, take weeks to bolt together the two buildings, using your, your terminology, or months. And I don't know how much thought you actually had, or time to, how much time you've actually had to give consideration to it. But, I mean, realistically, we're talking about a grocery store being reunited. Isn't, isn't that a bearing, is that not probably a bearing wall on the west, on the west side of the grocery store? The current co-op store?
We have not had privy to the, the building plans, but we assume that is a structural wall.
So, how big of an opening, I mean, and how long would it literally take? I understand the need to unify the, the infrastructure, but we're talking about a store that deals, you know, as has been pointed out, this is not an Ace Hardware where a little dust could be tolerated, but you're, you're dealing with food. How, how would you coordinate the, the unification of those two buildings, and how long would it take?
I mean, I'm, I'm not, you know, with my knowledge, I'm not really qualified to answer that. It would seem to be quite complicated and quite messy. I mean, you know, obviously, we've all been inside the co-op. We know that along this wall, there's, you know, a bunch of freezers, sort of.
That's where all, there's a lot of produce.
Yeah, produce, and then there's sort of the, the loading area is back here.
Right.
So, you know, I don't, it would, it would be a lot of work.
Okay, well, can we talk a little bit about the, the technology of today of offloading? Big, big trucks, 18-wheelers, or whatever, what are, I mean, you, we talk about hand-driven or automatic, electric, battery-operated, or whatever they are, hand trucks, or they, or, or pallet picker-uppers, whatever the terminology is. Is that, how, how quick, I mean, what is, what does that work look like? I mean, I just don't know. I've only been in grocery stores all my life, but I never really watched how the food gets in.
Well, I think that, I mean, we, you know, because again, you know.
I think you can pass, you don't need to answer any questions.
Yeah, okay.
So, if there's, if it's not a question, then Councilmember Schultz, we can get that information some other way.
All right, the next, the next question is, where would the ability project be located?
On the upper floor of the development.
In, in the original plan? Okay. How large a space is that, do you envision?
I think about 6,000 square feet. So, it would probably be either in this space that's labeled event right now, or in this section here.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now, let me ask you this, sort of a leading question. If, just hypothetically, the co-op were to sign a letter of intent tonight, what would be the next step in your, in, in your mind about going forward?
So, I mean, the first, you know, step would be for the co-op to say, you know, they want to do this plan. You know, they have to pick a direction.
Right.
We'd sign a letter of intent saying, you know, a very broad term of intent, the same, actually, the very same letter of intent that I published, you know.
Right, yeah, I've seen that letter.
It's the same one that the ability project signed. And then we'd get into the detail of all the things that we talked about, you know, how long the lease would be, you know, exactly how much space, what would be the requirements. But the broad outlines would be there, the broad outline, so we would proceed to, you know, entering it to a lease.
Okay. I'll finish my questions, at least this round, anyway. Thank you.
Councilmember Crashy?
Thanks, Mr. Washington. And since I didn't say anything in council comments, I want to thank members of the community and the co-op for being here. I don't know what's wrong with my microphone, there we go. There we go. I, you know, I'm really excited, first of all, I want to say, the fact that, you know, it's interesting because a lot of people come here when, when there's, we're talking about this issue. But there are three people who come here almost every week. One of them is Mr. Loveless, Mr. Olson in the back, and a lady named Mary Jane Machuie, who is not here today, but I emailed with her. And every single time she comes here, she talks about a place for her child who has developmental disabilities. And I think we've worked very hard to address those issues as best we can. And I think the fact that this potential development envisions a great organization like the Ability Project from Maryland, I think, is just another example of how this development is moving in a direction, hopefully, with the co-op that reflects the overall values of our community about being there for every, every single segment of our community, irrespective of your background. So, I think that that's, that's great news and I appreciate you doing that. In your letter that went along with the various options that you provided, the co-op, you had mentioned, although we have previously discussed the concepts outlined below, I thought it would be helpful to provide them in greater detail. So, based on that statement in your, in your letter, is it fair to say that in your five or six meetings with the co-op, and then I know you had, you had mentioned you had a few private ones with Ms. Berger, that these are concepts you've been discussing over the course of those meetings?
Yes.
Another thing I wanted to ask was, it seems also, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Turner property, the Matthews family, whether, and I'm only, I'm only going to be pessimistic once, if this LOI doesn't happen, putting that aside for a minute, because I'm hoping it's going to happen. But even if there is an expansion of the existing Turner facility as opposed to a new facility as you've envisioned in your preferred plan, it will, no matter what, require some level of coordination with the Turner property or the Matthews family. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Because I, I don't, I don't think anybody's privy to the co-op's lease, but I think you'd have to get some permission from your landlord to blow out a side of your store or your property. Isn't that fair to say?
Yes.
And knowing that the co-op uses refrigerated products, I know you said you haven't done much with grocery stores, but I'm sure you have restaurants and the like that you've worked with, they deal with perishables, which is a huge concern of theirs and I think a legitimate concern. Blowing out the side of a building which has refrigerated products, which I'm sure has all types of health regulations that apply to that, would require a shutdown.
I believe so. And also, remember, this is a, you know, very much older building. And so, you know, it's not sort of like a new building where it's sort of built to certain standards where we can kind of understand it. I'm sure the systems have been modified quite a bit over the years. I'm not suggesting it's, it's not a great facility, but that it's older and it's more complicated. And so, you know, you start taking out walls, you know, you don't know what's in there. And so, even under the best-laid plans, it could, you could find things that would require, you know, there might be components there that don't match modern components. And, you know, you may have to, you know, try to integrate two different systems that are incompatible. So, it's, it's quite an undertaking.
And I know, you know, we've talked about this process and I think you said it's frustrating and I think we all agree with that and it can be. And I think us as council members in the city strive to do a better job to articulate how this process is to move forward. One thing I think that you said with respect to that frustration is that, I believe the last time we were here and this, there was a packed audience, one of the main issues we talked about was business continuity and it was part of the co-op's comments, it was part of the community members' comments. And what I've realized is, to show some level of progress, it seems like we're not talking as much about business continuity at this stage. We're talking about how these goods are going to be delivered through the lay-by. And I appreciate you answering Councilmember Mills' question about, you know, how this impacts safety. Safe Roadways Committee is on us about, you know, the lay-by and its impact on pedestrian traffic if we really do want to make this pedestrian-friendly, which is our vision. So, in that context as well, you talked last time you were here about this market concept, which has a, a strong tendency to attract the types of businesses that this city has envisioned for this place, which are smaller 10-by-10 sort of stores within a market concept. Do you still believe that in this preferred plan iteration, that that market concept could be a possibility somewhere?
It is a possibility, although I would say that as we studied it more, particularly with a brand-new co-op and sort of anchor there and all kind of the expanded type of things that we would do, it may lend itself more to, you know, to traditional shops like I showed there, like, you know, like a standalone restaurant on, on the, on the end there or like a coffee shop or like that. So, we look, look at both concepts, but with the brand-new expanded co-op, market concept, you know, makes sort of less sense. And I think it might be better to have sort of complementary uses because most of the market concepts are more sort of food-oriented.
And I guess the million-dollar question, I guess two million-dollar questions. Do you want the co-op to be your anchor tenant?
Absolutely. I mean, as I said, just from an emotional point of view, I like the co-op, I respect what they've done. Obviously, they have tremendous support in the community. They have both customers and members. And so, you know, I like that, I respect that. From a business perspective, they are a, you know, they're not some mom-and-pop. They are, right now, they're a $10-million operation. They, I think their pre-tax profit, the last reporting cycle I saw was about half a million, half a million dollars. They've been in business 35 years. They're ideal tenant. You know, they're ready to go. We don't have to look for someone else. I mean, looking for a tenant is, you know, work, expense, uncertainty. So, from both a, you know, an emotional perspective, from a community perspective, from a business perspective, we absolutely want them. And that's, 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 you know, I talked about frustration. I didn't mean that I was frustrated, you know, from a personal level, I was frustrated that this seemed like such a natural thing that, you know, we could have them there, we could have a great new building, that they could, you know, under, I think someone's suggestion, they could own, they could lease for decades. It would be great for them, it'd be great for us. It just seems like it's frustrating that it hasn't been able to come together.
Two final questions. So, based on your response there, are you asking, are you telling me that 30 additional days would be helpful for you to move towards a relationship?
I mean, to be honest, I don't know. I mean, well, let me answer it a couple of ways. I mean, as people pointed out, it is the holidays, you know...
So, you have until January 6th, based on my math?
Well, I mean, well, I said it to be frank, that even if we decided tonight, there's no, you know, there's not a lot going to happen on our part between now. So, 30 days is fine, but, you know, it's, there's got to be a meeting of the minds. And so, if the co-op feels that the lay-by, you know, loading is just completely unacceptable, then there is no point in continuing. We cannot provide a loading dock to their specifications on this site. I think we are providing a, a reasonable, you know, loading ability for them under this scenario. But if they don't agree and if that's just off the table, and if moving to a new site is just completely off the table, then there is no point in extending it. I mean, it's just not. There's just, there's just no meeting of the minds there.
And then just a final question. In your letter, you also say that you have met with the Maryland State Highway Authority and they have conceptionally support this plan. What does that mean?
That means that we met with them, we actually met with them on the site, we showed them our plan, they looked at traffic and they said that, you know, they, they thought that that was a good idea. Also, the traffic engineer that we have retained, who has, you know, his, he and his firm have, you know, you know, decades of experience working with State Highway also believe as well. And I also believe that city staff has separately contacted State Highway and, you know, they have, you know, said that they agree with it in principle. Thank you.
Councilmember Mael?
Yeah, I wanted to just ask a follow-up question on the, on business continuity. So, if it were the preferred option, the one we're looking at here, the co-op would stay in the space where it is now while you build the, the piece on the east?
Yes.
And then, how would you do the parking? When would you do parking?
Okay.
So, parking would go under the entire site?
Well, no, we'd have to do it in two stages, which I'm glad you pointed it out. I mean, that is a tremendous concession on our part to do that two-stage development. I mean, you can, you, I think you've probably all seen construction sites, excavating large sites. In order to do just a parking lot, excavate that to a parking lot level, build on top of that, build a whole new place for the co-op, allow them to move without business continuity disruption, and then go to the other part of the site and do all that, that's a tremendous concession. I mean, if we, if business continuity was not important, that would be something that no developer would ever want to do. And we're willing to do that because business continuity has been expressed as, you know, as key. It's key by the co-op, it's key by the city, and so, we're willing to do that. But it's, that's how we would do it.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, excuse me, if it doesn't, if we get to 30 days and it hasn't worked out, there is still a design option that you are interested in that would involve a physical space or, without touching the Turner building, the Matthews property, the co-op would stay there, the Matthews property would stay as it is, you know, but for whatever reasonable accommodation to, to load. And then you would build some remaining design adjacent. Is that, that's still a, an option? We just didn't go through it tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the parking, what percentage of it would be for the public? Have you guys decided that yet? And what type of rates would the public have to pay?
Just, I don't know at this point what those numbers would be. We haven't got to that.
All right. Regarding the property owners that are west of the site, Johnny's, have you guys had any substantive conversations with them that potentially they could be incorporated into this proposal or a future development?
I mean, the, the conversations we've had with the owner of the auto clinic indicated a price that was not market, I'll put it, was well above market. And so, as the last time we spoke, that was not feasible to provide. And so, you know, we would sort of want to go in that direction east first. So, right now, you know, we're stuck, but, you know, things can change.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
One last question. Councilmember Mael mentioned, if we got to the end of the 30 days, assuming we approved it and then a decision was made to seek another anchor tenant, so the co-op would remain in its current size and status, you would then build whatever you were going to build on the city lot, a series of stores of some kind. Would there be a necessity under that plan to have a lay-by? Would there be eighteen-wheelers coming in or would it be a smaller group of trucks? Do you have a sense for that? Would it depend on the types of stores?
Well, again, the, the city has called for, I believe the term is reasonable accommodation to loading for the co-op. The co-op has said that they need eighteen-wheelers to load their truck and so, we would have to build a lay-by as part of that. I mean, you know, it would be, that's what, that's what we agreed to do and so, we would do that.
Would you anticipate the other stores having that-sized truck or is that hard to say at this point?
It's hard to say at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I just follow up on that, Mr. Washington? So, I, I know what our development agreement says and we've talked to residents about this. If, and I think many of us hope that it doesn't move in this direction, but at some point in the future, we move in the direction of saying that you can go and look for another anchor tenant. What, can you just walk us through, what does that mean to you in practicality and moving forward?
I mean, it, it means that we've got to, I mean, that's what developers do. I mean, they, they find attractive sites and attractive places and they find, you know, tenants who want to be there. And so, we think, you know, the reason we were attracted, you know, to this site is that we, you know, we wanted the co-op to be our anchor tenant and we would build around them. But if the, the co-op is not our anchor tenant, then there are other people who want to be in your town. And this is a great location and I think we can do some creative things with the site. And we just have to get looking. But I don't, you know, it'll take some work, but there are definitely people out there who want to be here.
And what does that mean then for the co-op?
Because the co-op would, you know, load essentially the same way they load now. They would have, you know, I assume they do not, I mean, I guess they've always had the ability to expand, you know, east on their site and their current parking lot. They may want to consider that. Actually, I looked in the, you know, I was reading the Tacoma Junction Task Force Report the other day and I think one of their recommendations was an expansion. So, but obviously, that'd be up to the court whether they want to expand there. But assuming they didn't, their store would stay at the same size as it is now, they would still load the same place, we would provide kind of a corridor for them to load through and the eighteen-wheelers would pull up to the lay-by, they drop it, pallets the same way they do now, the truck driver would take it in the same way they do now. And so, it would be pretty close to the same way that they, you know, have done business.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Under, what, I just wanted to verify that under all the schemes that we have seen tonight that have been discussed, there is going to be a co-op, as far as all of us know. I mean, there's, there's no way in any of these schemes that there wouldn't be a co-op. Is that right? I just want to be clear. I mean, I may, maybe asking a simple-minded question, but based on a lot of the emails that I've received and some of the comments here tonight, seems to be some anxiety about the, the mere, it's sort of a mere existence of, of the co-op in the future. And, and I want to be clear that that's not what we're talking about, any of us, and it's not what any of us want.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. All right. I think we're done for this part with the work session, unless you have something else you need to tell us. I need a five-minute break personally. So, we'll take a, say, five-minute break, try and be back in seats by 10:10 and we'll move on to the voting session. Thank you. In seats at 10:10. In seats at 10:10.
Now, we're moving from our work session to the last item on our agenda, um, which is a voting session. Everyone should have in front of them a draft resolution. You will notice in the draft resolution, it is incomplete. Where is mine? I had one. Oh, thank you. So, I'll let people take a moment. So, the part that is blank is the part, uh, regarding what action the council wants to take tonight. As the deputy city manager, uh, talked to us, um, there are three options that are laid out in the development agreement. We can, A, provide the developer with additional time not to exceed 30 days with which to negotiate, uh, with the co-op regarding an LOI. Or B, we can require the developer to commence seeking a letter of, um, intent with another anchor tenant for the project other than the co-op, and require the developer to provide reasonable accommodation to the co-op's operation of its business in the co-op's existing premises. Or C, terminate the agreement upon, upon 10 business days' notice to the developer, and the developer will transfer indoor sign, the transferables to the city, and the city will pay the developer an amount up to $75,000 for reasonable out-of-pocket costs that the developer has incurred as of the date of such termination. So, the way, um, if my colleagues are amenable to this, I thought we would run this next session is, um, have each of us, um, speak just for a few minutes regarding, um, where you, uh, find yourself at this moment, um, and then maybe take a hand vote on whether we want to move forward with option A, B, or C in the, um, resolution, and then move the resolution. We can have further discussion then, and then vote on it. Does that work for folks?
Should we push our buttons?
Yes, if you would like to, okay. Councilmember Siemens would like to go first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to see us move on. It's, uh, 10 o'clock at night, and I know we still have a lot more to say. I've been, um, interested to hear all the discussion tonight. I, um, I've been surprised to hear, uh, a lot of what I would call negative terms, like misinformation, anxiety, frustrations, uh, but, uh, I've come away from tonight's discussion, uh, with optimism. I, uh, I'm really pleased to see the progress that has been made. I know that, uh, negotiations like this can, uh, can get frustrating for the people involved, but, uh, when I look at what, uh, we had asked for, which was, uh, for the developer to work with the co-op and, and recognize that the co-op was, uh, a strongly supported institution here in the, in the city, and that the council wanted, uh, them to participate in this development, uh, it looks like things have been moving in the right direction. I remember, uh, four things that the co-op, uh, was adamant about, and adequate parking was one of them. I, you know, see these plans, and I see that some of them, uh, show adequate parking, uh, you know, expanded parking from what we have today. And, um, it looks like that has been, uh, a need that has been addressed. Room for expansion, I think all the, the, uh, the plans that were presented tonight, uh, both the developer plans plus the co-op plans showed, uh, about a doubling of the size of the co-op, and, and that falls within the size that, uh, had been discussed earlier. And then, uh, business continuity, um, that's kind of a mixed bag. It depends on the plan, on what, uh, uh, which plan you pick, but certainly if there's a, a, uh, a whole new building with the co-op moving into it, uh, it's, it's not hard to envision that business continuity could be, uh, pretty well addressed, although obviously there would be some moving of the, uh, of the goods, uh, to make that happen. Then we get to the loading dock, and this is like the most talked-about subject, uh, in this whole project. And, uh, I've come away with the, you know, at least the, uh, the proposal and the alternative look to me like it's got to be pretty close. It may not be yet what needs to be, but it looks like it's pretty close. It addresses the small trucks, uh, it addresses the 18-wheelers in a way that, it looks like it's like a 40-foot difference between what there is today and, and what's proposed. So, um, like I said, I don't, I'm not in a position to be able to judge what, what works and what doesn't work. That's up to the parties involved. But I can tell you, I, I'm walking away feeling optimistic that, uh, a whole lot has been accomplished, and we've, uh, you know, the parties have, have moved, whether they can appreciate, step back and look at what's happened, uh, during this amount of time. You know, it looks like it has moved quite a bit, uh, since the last time we talked. I, uh, for that reason, I'm confident that, uh, that, you know, these, we can end up with, uh, LOI, a letter of intent, uh, with a little bit more time, so I'm willing to, uh, support the 30-day extension. I would hope that, uh, that both parties use some of that time to, to think about, um, how valuable they are to each other. You know, NDC, uh, you know, it certainly has a, uh, what would be a strong anchor. It's a proven, uh, business in the community, and, uh, something that has great value, I would think, for, uh, the owner or the operator of a building such as this. And, uh, you know, I don't know. Again, I can't judge, but it seems like for the co-op that, uh, some of the proposals are, uh, would end up with being, uh, not just better than what, uh, what you have today, but, uh, that, uh, is beyond what, uh, what the expectations were, at least what I understood from the beginning. So, um, I'm willing to support the 30-day extension, and I, uh, I trust that, uh, that that's going to be sufficient time to, uh, turn the corner and actually, uh, kind of hold hands and, and, uh, go forward on the path to see where we can, uh, what the next steps are, so we can end up with a better Tacoma Junction and a, and a better Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for being here and, um, sending in all the emails and contacting me separately. It's been a really positive part of this entire process to see the, uh, level of passion and interest and engagement and involvement by members of the community, regardless of where you end up on the specific details or the overall approach. I think, uh, I do agree with Councilmember Siemens that progress was made. I've said this a few times before, and I just want to reiterate it, that I'm not comfortable with the idea that we should, quote-unquote, "help" the co-op or "help" NDC. To me, it's what's best for the city, and, uh, the lot is owned by the city. Steps were taken predating my involvement on the council that set this process in motion and involved selecting NDC and also having the co-op designated as, uh, the anchor tenant. And I support those things. And I think we've taken a lot of steps to ensure that the co-op would be treated fairly in the process. We, myself and others on the council fought to ensure that the development agreement was modified, right, right at the end of the process, when we were due to sign it in July, and we made some changes that I think a lot of people in the community thought would be helpful, and NDC didn't have to accept them, and they did. And I think that allowed us to go forward, um, in a positive way. I, I do think that, I am supporting the extra 30 days. I do think it's important, number one, to see if we can, if there can be an agreement. Um, some of the discussions that we heard tonight make me feel like that's still possible, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But I think also, I don't think it would be that healthy for the city if just right now, tonight, we rejected the 30 days and then either killed the deal or, um, went ahead with the idea of, of another anchor tenant. We had several people come before us tonight who kind of were just figuring out where we were, and those of you who have been following this all along might kind of find that funny, but I think that's actually the majority of the people in the city. I like to think that people are home watching me on TV every time I speak, and the rest of us are, but, uh, I actually don't. Oh, Seth Grimes isn't still the city council member? So, there's a, there's a lot of that that you encounter. So, I think in fairness, we really got it out there tonight. Another 30 days will help, I think, help this, everybody in the city understand what's happening. And, you know, I, I said this in the thing that I circulated to Ward 1 folks, and I don't know how many people see that, but I really think what we saw in the recent elections is we can't just be in sort of virtual armed camps fighting each other. And I think that finding a way to, to get together on this is really important. I don't want, for the good of the city, I don't want to feel like, hey, we got a 4-3 vote, and it's going to go through this way or that way, and everybody's going to be mad at each other for the, you know, for the rest of, uh, the next few years while the project goes forward. I would much rather have us find a way to actually do it that people can feel comfortable with. So, just a couple of other observations. All the options, even the most minimal in the sense that it keeps the building entirely there and just has the sort of breakthrough piece, anything other than just leaving the co-op exactly as it, as it is right now with no expansion, all of those involve the Matthews slash Turner family. And I agree with whoever said it, and maybe it was Mr. Washington, we should all get together and find a way to approach them and see what, what they, what they're willing to do. And that includes the city, to me, because without that, it's not going to happen. So, that's, that's one thing I think, I think we should say. There are other options, uh, not yet explored. I think, uh, my colleague, and he can talk more about it, Councilmember Mail pointed out that you could put the loading dock down the building so that the distance would be exactly the same as it is right now, partly covered. I don't know if that's better or not, but that hadn't been explored evidently, so what, that can be used for the next 30 days. I don't think the next 30 days should be for the purpose of figuring out from state highway and, um, traffic point of view, and then wait for that, and then do the negotiations. We might get a little bit more on, on traffic and state highway between now and then, but we're not going to get a definitive word on that, and that's not, that's not the time for it, in my opinion. So, if there's going to be further discussions with the extension of the 30 days, which I hope is what we'll do today, it should be to get an agreement on the LOI or come as close to that, um, as it is, uh, possible to do. And I, I do want to mention one other thing. We still have other approvals down the road in this process, as was mentioned, including the site plan, and, and we could reject it. I don't want that to happen, but this is not literally, um, the final step in the process. So, um, I will stop there, but I am supporting the 30 days. I hope my colleagues will go along with it.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when I, uh, came tonight, I didn't know whether or not I was going to support the 30 days. You know, I've been in these negotiations before, and normally when you, and I only represent tenants, normally when you have a client, they want to lease space, they will do whatever it takes to try to sign a letter of intent. I mean, they will try to work out these differences. None of these deals are perfect. Everybody does not get what they want. There is always some give and take. There just always is. We've worked on this project here for almost two years, maybe even more than two years. We've had these discussions, we've talked about lay-by, lay-by, we talked about continuity of operations, we've talked about all these things since this project started. And NDC has come up with a number of answers to these questions. None of it's perfect, but even if you sign a letter of intent today, there's still a whole bunch of unanswered questions, and we can't get to those questions until you sign the letter of intent. So, I'm going to join my colleagues and support 30 days. But I just hope that the co-op comes to the table and understands there's no other way that we're going to be able to solve this problem of the delivery until you guys sign the letter of intent, and we can move forward with real options for both parties. Because like, uh, Mr. Acefa said, this is a city lot. It's for the whole entire community. We, on the council, have to think about what is best for the residents in all the wards, not just the wards that border the, the co-op and the city lot. So, I'm going to support the 30 days, and I hope you guys can come together and move this project forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail?
Uh, thank you. I similarly will support a 30-day extension, um, so that's the, the answer, but I'll, um, use more words, uh, in particular to respond to the public comments that we got tonight, uh, because I think it's important, and I know people often want to, want to feel like what they said got addressed in some way. Um, I first want to address the issue of new people coming who are speaking about this, and, and I always think it's just wonderful when new people are part of the process. And my job as a council member is to listen to every, on every issue, is to listen to everyone, regardless of how informed or in the weeds they are about issues. And so, you know, to And so, you know, to me, I think that's just always really important. We have folks who have been here for 30 or 60 or however many years and have spent forever on different ideas, but we also have those folks who haven't. And sometimes it's great to get fresh eyes in, and it's a great reminder to those of us, like many of you, who are in this issue day after day, that like, oh, there really are fresh perspectives on things. A few issues. The issue, and Councilmember Kovar in particular brought it up, with the Matthews family, the Matthews family that owns the building that the co-op is now in. With them, it seems like regardless of what option we're talking about, we're still a long way from understanding what they want, what they would do, what they won't do. That could be a deal breaker for anything, even if we were all perfectly happy in line right now with LOIs to fill the whole space, not just the anchor spaces, but all the spaces. We would still, we still have that issue. That could still not resolve well. So I just wanted to say that, because that seems to be a pretty important issue that despite what progress we make now or in 30 days, could be an issue. But it doesn't seem to me that it has to determine whether or not we get an LOI in 30 days, because that could still get worked out. On the issue of traffic and traffic studies and that whole space, my understanding all along, from the moment that the task force produced its report about Tacoma Junction, was that the people on the task force and the people on the council that accepted the task force's report and the people in the community that came to hear the task force's report, all those people were envisioning more business in the junction. They were envisioning an expanded co-op. They were envisioning occupancy of the empty buildings on the other side of the street. They were envisioning more business spaces in the city-owned lot. They were envisioning public use of space on the city-owned lot. So I want to distinguish the increased use of space in the junction, which has got some traffic associated with it, with the way that entrance and exit on the site affects traffic, the way that a truck turning blocks or doesn't block traffic or is impossible or a truck backing up into the site. I mean, those seem to me very distinct issues. We, as a community, have identified all along, I think, that we want more traffic associated with people using the junction, pedestrian traffic, vehicle traffic. That's implicit, and implicit and explicit in that long ago junction task force report. So to me, that's sort of a done, resolved question that we've all talked about with the community many times over years. And the question is, how do we make sure that however, if the site gets used, how it gets designed, is designed in a way that the loading and unloading of vehicles, that the entrance and exit of pedestrian vehicles or other commercial vehicles is safe for pedestrians, is safe for people using the site, is safe for vehicles, the majority of which are not stopping in Tacoma Park and are zipping right through that intersection? And that seems, that kind of traffic study is part of the process of NDC or anyone getting approval from the planning commission and SHA ultimately to build on the site, and I think that appropriately comes later. I would like us to be able to get, to maybe ask a more general question of SHA and get a little bit more of an answer, which is, are there laybys on state highways? Are there bus bays on state highways? Can those work safely? That's a basic question, and I think the answer is almost certainly yes, that SHA could probably, they can't answer the specifics of this intersection, but they could absolutely answer that question of the use of, the establishment of, the presence of laybys or bus bays or other kinds of pullouts like that on roads. And I think the answer is certainly yes. That's an option that they have, that exists in the state highway system in Maryland. The last question I want to raise, or the last comment I want to make, is the issue of, how do we, do we use all the space, or most of the space, on the surface of the land that the city owns, that the residents own, for, you know, retail and public gathering space? Or do we use it for trucks backing up, turning around? And the way that I think about it is, we want to really try to maximize the services that are provided at the junction, the places for people to shop, to interact, to hang out, to dine, to gather. And so to my mind, we're trying to maximize that to the greatest extent we can. So when I look at the different designs that have more on the surface, more gathering space, less space for vehicles, that seems to me to be a goal. And then, and I don't know that this is the case, and I'm happy to follow up with the co-op afterwards, but when I think of loading dock, I think of the Millennium Falcon lining up with another ship, and R2D2 being able to roll from the Millennium Falcon onto something else, right? There's this like docking, right? There's docking. And my sense was, when we first started talking about this, that what the co-op was really hoping for in the long term was not the configuration that it has now, where you unload a truck on a pallet and then wheel it into a door, but was actually something more seamless. Like you see at many businesses, where a truck can back right up and, you know, it's a lot easier. So I get that all the options that we have talked about tonight, and indeed in months past, have really been about a loading arrangement, not what I think of as that kind of loading dock arrangement. And our, I think Councilmember Smith said this, you know, it's difficult to get everything you want, and we've just not talked about any options that involve that kind of perfect mesh loading dock, but rather loading configurations that are 55 feet or 85 feet that involve a truck backing up or a truck pulling up on the side. And I still, I'm at the space where, when I look at the drawings, all the ones we've seen tonight and a few others in the months past that are on the city's website, I have a hard time understanding the difference in the business viability of 55 feet versus 85 feet or 65 feet or 45 feet, or how those things work out. But it seems to me that there's, I think, a fairly, it seems like, and I'm happy to be informed otherwise, that there must be a line in there where, you know, we could do one thing but not another. There's less risk to business viability of the co-op for, you know, one configuration versus another. But that, to me, is just sort of still, I know it seems to be the fundamental issue left on the table, since we've resolved parking and expansion and public space and protecting the woods in the back, that this is really, you know, the biggest issue that's standing, that remains outstanding. But for me, that just seems like something that we could work out, and that I welcome hearing more from the co-op, from the board or from the staff about why I may be misunderstanding things, or maybe there is more room. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's being here tonight. I know it's been long. It seems awfully warm in here to me. But I'm going to vote in opposition to the 30-day extension, and I'd probably be the only one on the city council will do that. But I think some neat things need to be said in a more candid sort of way as to why. But first, let me undersay what I believe, is that I'm certain that there is nobody who does not want the co-op to succeed and to expand, including me. And I say that because I keep hearing these sort of wistful comments about people who've lived here and love the co-op, as though they've talked about something that just died. Like, oh, wasn't the co-op great? Or, and we're going to lose the co-op. And that's just not true at all. The co-op isn't going anywhere under any of these circumstances, and we need to get past all this woe-is-me kind of a feeling, and be clear-headed about it, and some of us aren't. Understand that I don't represent residents who live within walking distance of the co-op, at least not that they're going to walk that far and come home with a grocery cart full of groceries. Okay? So I kind of come at the development of this piece of the city of Tacoma Park from a citywide point of view, trying to think about the interests of all the residents of this city. And I think it was aptly described by my colleagues about what the original vision was in the task force report about what the Tacoma Junction could become and could represent for all residents of the city. And so I'm thinking foremost about people who live in my constituency, but also what I think is going to be really beneficial from an economic development point of view for the city now and in the future, and as we look at possible projects that developers might develop along New Hampshire Avenue and places like that. During the past few months, the past year, let's say, I've met with Ms. Berger privately in her office twice. I've met with Mr. Washington twice in his office, and I've talked to lots of people in the area, just in offering my suggestions and ideas. And listening really hard as to what I have, what people are trying to tell me. And it sure is a big range of feelings across the board, just in the emails that I've gotten in the last two or three days. I frankly feel that I could just as easily vote for a 30-days extension as not, but I don't see that it's going to make any difference. You have to understand that a letter of intent is a non-binding, non-binding agreement. It doesn't force the co-op to stay. It's kind of like getting engaged. You know, it's sort of like it's a public announcement that the two of us, the two entities, this case, the co-op and the developer, are committed to trying to work something out going, and that there is a lot of unknowns in our future, and we know from what our parents tell us that marriage isn't always a bed of roses. But we are nevertheless going to be engaged, and we always have the right, before you get married, to decide not to get married, which would be the case with a non-binding letter of intent. But the co-op has been reluctant to sign. What that basically says, that they just feel like it's too big of a risk for them at this time, from a business point of view, for the legacy of the co-op itself, to take this chance. And it's a business decision. Now, for a lot of us in this room, it's not a business decision, it's a quality-of-life kind of a thing. We want to see the co-op stay. We want somebody to practically guarantee to us that this co-op is going to be here for time immemorial, because it's such an important and valuable asset to our city. And it's hard to imagine the city council spending as much time working with any single, any other single business in the entire city, trying to make sure that it has continuity of existence. But we have, and we even went so far as to help the, make, help the co-op get a beer and wine license, which has been lucrative for the co-op, and we're happy for that. But I'm basically convinced that 30 days from now, we're going to be having the same conversation that we're having tonight, and I don't feel like going through it again. I've heard everybody speaking tonight, and I love you all. And you don't have to say you love me, because I know that's not the case, and some of you are going to be mad at me for saying this. But I don't see that the co-op is in any way at risk. And the co-op management disagrees with me. They see that this is just a bit abridged too far. What I see here is that, Councilmember Siemens talked about the progress that has been made over the last period of time. Well, most of that progress has been introduced by Adrian Washington, as he's come forward with a lot of different schemes. You're only seeing the last few. There's been a whole bunch of interims, trying to figure out how to do that, how to meet all four of the, or three of the co-op's kind of like key, critical requirements. And they've pretty much nailed three of them, but not the loading dock one. And what I see here is the co-op taking the risk of turning their back on the possibility of a building substantially larger than theirs, is not, maybe not the 6,000 feet that they hoped, additional feet that they hoped to get, but a whole lot more, be a brand-new building that would be custom-designed from the outside in with all of the utilities, electrical hookups, wireless hookups, and so forth and so on, the natural gas connections and all the stuff that grocery stores need, and modern, energy-efficient, lead gold kind of specifications for a brand-new building. And I can't imagine, you know, there's lots of co-ops across the United States, and how many of them, including the one in Greenbelt, have the good fortune to be able to have a custom-built building built just for them, for the co-op, and the way that they want to operate? I think it's a fantastic opportunity, and I'm just absolutely baffled why the co-op cannot see that that's really a good thing for the co-op's long-term future. I'm not persuaded that the loading dock issue is an existentialist issue. And we heard from Ms. Susan Robb earlier this evening, talking about her observing the backing up of trucks. Well, if you have a single loading dock in the plan that is being promoted and offered by the co-op's architect, you're going to have a long line of trucks backing up and trying to get to that one loading dock. At least with a lay-by and this particular plan, you've got a room here for an 18-wheeler to be offloading, plus space for a lot of smaller trucks to come in on the side over there to be unloading by hand truck and other things. And as been pointed out, the, and it's been commented on here tonight, well, gee, the co-op won't be able to really prosper if it doesn't have a loading dock. Well, the co-op has done excellently well, by their own admission, with profitability doing just that, having offloading onto pallets and having those pallets shifted into the building safely, as it is now. And so how can you make the argument that, whoa, well, we have to do offloading via pallet, that it is not going to work successfully? I have not seen any evidence produced by the co-op, other than some talk about the national organization of grocery co-ops, or whatever it happens to be, making broad statements about loading and offloading. I haven't seen evidence that it's going to cost the co-op a nickel more to do it that way, since it's actually the truck drivers that bring the trucks to do the offloading, because they're responsible to make sure that the groceries that come into the thing are actually delivered and not messed up halfway, you know, 10 feet from the door. So I mean, I'm just trying to be very practical about this. I've had, in my conversations with Ms. Berger privately, I've tried to talk, as a former banker who's financed lots of businesses and has to worry about the reality of their pro formas, about that this sort of an issue can be reduced if you analyze it down to what's called performance criteria. From a business point of view, purely as a business point of view, the co-op needs to know when the product is going to be delivered as best they can, to make sure that it gets delivered on time, that it's safe, that it's clean, and that it gets off of the truck and into the sanctity of the building that they control within a certain number of minutes, and so that frozen foods on a hot day don't get thawed, and so that meat and all that other stuff, it has to be so delicately and quickly handled, get into the building and secured, either put out on the floor or put into refrigeration or stored somewhere in the back room. So that's something that the, those kind of performance criteria can be penciled out. You can figure that out. And I'm sure that Ms. Berger and Abdi have, you know, all that information in their head. And so if they can see that a truck, 18-wheeler, is capable of being unloaded within a certain period of time, and what the risks are and what the costs are, literal costs are, then they can figure out, what is the risks here and what's it going to cost us to do this? And I haven't seen any of that information. I'm sure it absolutely exists, and I'm not going to be able to be convinced that an extra 40 feet of delivery distance, or whatever it is, is going to make much of a difference. It's certainly not going to be an existential threat to the success of the business, one that's been thriving that way for the last 18 years. it's been thriving that way for the last 18 years. Now, I listened very carefully to Ms. Berger's comments at the beginning, because this was going to be her one shot this evening, to really, you know, make the case. And I was really disappointed in the fact that, while there was a lot of history spoken about, over, about what's happened, and should have happened, and could have happened, but didn't happen, and all the things that they've tried to do to prove their fairness, and their sincere efforts to move this project forward, I never heard the words where they were asking for another 30 days of time, because they feel like another 30 days would help. Frankly, all I heard was about the past. And, you know, the past is unfortunately, when you think about it, it is the past. And in a development project, as my colleague was saying a few minutes ago, in development projects, there's always things that get messy. You just can't do this, particularly when you're dealing with existing businesses and old buildings. I mean, that's a complicated process. So, I think basically that the lay-by will work, and I think that the presentation that we've seen here tonight, from Mr. Washington, and the fact that they're going to be able to incorporate the Ability Project into this, into this, is just absolutely fabulous. And you look at this, and I can imagine that it really is, I think it's going to satisfy just about all the criteria of the original To Come Junction Task Force, and be done in a lovely way, in a scale that works for that part of our city. We're not looking at three-story buildings here, we're looking at something that's just going to be a fun place to go. And I think, within a few years, after the co-op has moved into this place, the co-op members are going to be absolutely tickled pink about this. Now, sure, I could vote yes to do this, but I just want to say that, you know, Christmas, the holidays are coming up, there's going to be a snowstorm, I haven't quite figured out what day that's going to be, and we're not all going to be able to get to work, but, and people are going to be leaving town, and we're going to end up, January 6th, finding out that, gosh, wow, where'd those 30 days go? And all gone at all, we really meant to talk seriously about a loading dock, and we just haven't gotten around to it. And I don't want to hear any of that 30 days from now, I'm really tired of it. It's the end of 2016, we've been dealing with this thing for about, what, since April of 2015? And I think there's enough has been said about it. And so, I would ask and pray that the co-op members sign the letter of intent today, like the one that was sent, because it's a very simple piece of paper. If you have read it, it is the most basic something, I mean, it's kind of like, say, if you love me, sign here. That's really about, pretty much what it amounts to. I'm not kidding. I'm serious about this. Nobody is being asked to, you know, we're not even going to have premarital sex, we just want you to sign on dotted line that you're committed to work with us going forward, and we will work this thing out. And so, that's why I'm voting against it. I just think we're just kidding ourselves up here, that something's going to change in the next 30 days, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Koreshi?
I don't even know how to follow that. Let's take a 30-day break, I'll be back, gather my thoughts. Um, sorry, I just got to gather myself. I, you know, I'm going to say something that some of my colleagues may take issue with, but I'm going to say it anyways. I'm the young guy up here. I have, you know, I was born probably the year some of the people up here were on council, I don't know. But I will tell you this, as a young person who moved here from New York City with his then-three-year-old, now has a five-year-old and a two-year-old, the reason why we moved to the city was because of its walkability, of its proximity to a major, major US city, the capital of the United States. From my house in Ward 3, you know, DC border is a stone's throw away. So, this concept of these big 18-wheelers coming into a small junction, to the, just the thought that it's foreign to people is, sort of boggles my mind. I've been listening to a lot of emails, or reading a lot of emails, hundreds of emails these last few weeks, and surprisingly, unlike Councilmember Schultz, I live, I live and represent a ward that is directly in the backyard of the co-op. My constituents feel very strongly about this co-op, as do I, and as does the city, because the city has provided unprecedented protections for the co-op, whether they're part of the development or not, which is quite important to note. But also, I think people fail to recognize, that even people in Ward 3 want this city to move in a direction where we can increase its walkability, where we can not have to jump in our minivans and our SUVs to go to Bethesda and Silver Spring, because it's okay if it's over there, but we can't walk around in our own town. I, as a young person up here, will tell you that this is what's appealing to the more, the population that's moving into this community. This is what's appealing to young folks, because we are used to a walkable, metropolis and home environment, where we can walk to shop and walk to do a lot of things. So, I ask everybody to think, looking forward, not today, look 10, 15, 20 years from now, that whether we go forward with this deal or not, that co-op building that represents a lot of important things, including locally-owned goods, and everything green and important, think globally, buy locally, is an old building. And the thought of a new, modern, energy-efficient building that is consistent with its values, I think is something that we should think about, and we should pursue. On September 29th of 2014, when I wasn't on this council, the co-op came up here, and it listed many demands, this is after the RFP process had almost completed. Business continuity is one of them. Every option offered by MDC today is about little or no impact on business continuity. The co-op today did not argue or say that we have real concern about shutting down as a business. The only option that exists out there where business continuity would be an issue is, if we want to expand that Turner Building and knock down a wall. Second thing, parking is needed. The two iterations that you've seen, there's 100 spaces versus 56 spaces, whatever the number is, that issue that was a co-op demand has been addressed. 10,007, 17,500 square feet of space, 10,000 for the store, 7,500 for office and other facilities. With the first iteration here, you have 10,200 square feet of space in a new facility. And then the access to the dock, the loading dock, which was an issue that they raised early on. And there was a lot said today about the loading dock, and how the co-op has paid so much money to the city, 20-some thousand dollars because of this loading dock. The co-op has received a benefit from the city, because you are using the city, the taxpayers' parking lot, to bring those 18-wheelers and turn them around, and also lease spaces from the city. It's called a land license, and the most recent amendment to it specifically references that this agreement could be terminated at any stage, because the city envisions that it's going to develop that property. So, this access to the dock, I think the co-op has known for a very long period of time, that that was not going to be the end-all, be-all forever. I, along with my colleagues, have really made efforts to speak to both sides of this issue. I've spoken to Ms. Berger, I've spoken to Mr. Washington, and I think they can be my witnesses, I've been asking both of them very hard questions, that have been posed to be by the community. MDC says it wants the co-op. The co-op says it wants to be here, and it's going to be here no matter what, whether the development happens or not. So, that to me begs the question, God forbid if this development doesn't happen, and the co-op is not part of it, the city still has protections in place, that that anchor tenant that Adrian Washington's going to go look for, cannot directly compete with the co-op, period. That anchor tenant, and Adrian Washington is required by the development agreement to provide reasonable accommodation to the co-op, to allow them to do, run their business while this development's going on, whether they're part of the development or not. So, if you're going to stay here, co-op, which I hope you will, and I know you will, and you're willing to stay here, then, and you're going to be loading and unloading the same way, whether you sign up for a new facility or not, to me, it's, you know, what's the difference? I think the greatest difference is, you are going to be the centerpiece of an exciting urban, you know, junction that's going to really revitalize our community, and revitalize those neighboring businesses that want it, many of them. And, you know, with somebody who's ward and could argue if this is all about politics, could get the most flak for deciding to authorize MDC to engage a new tenant, I'll be honest with you, this entire two-week process, I've battled whether I want to vote for the 30 days or not, because I've asked Adrian Washington and Marilyn Berger, point-blank, do you want 30 more days? Even the most hardcore supporters of the co-op, some of whom may or may not even want development, have told me privately, you know, I don't think anything's going to happen in 30 days. But like some of my colleagues, after seeing what I saw today, the concessions that have been made, the progress that has been made, irrespective of whether we believe the false narrative that's out there in the blogosphere and the different listservs, I think 30 days can be promising. And that means 30 days of working with each other, and knowing that there's holidays in between, working every single day, staying in contact every single day, and I urge the parties to do that. No more emails, gathering your supporters, just spend the next 30 days trying to work through your issues, this community wants you to. I'm going to vote for the 30 days, but I will be completely honest, you know, I don't want these 30 days to be a futile exercise. My colleague to my left thinks it probably will be. But I will tell you this, I think with the Ability Project coming in, with this new, exciting development, and looking forward to the future of this community, 10, 20 years down the line, if within 30 days, we're in the same position, I am prepared to authorize and vote to authorize MDC to engage a new anchor tenant, and you know what, even in that scenario, the co-op is not going anywhere. But I ask Adrian Washington and Marilyn Berger to please, don't make me make that decision. I hope that you all come back here in 30 days with an LOI. Thanks.
Thank you. So, I'll just say a few words very quickly, so we can get to the vote. I want to thank the residents for coming tonight, and thank you for staying so late this evening. I want to thank the co-op for their participation this evening, and Mr. Washington. I want to take a moment and also thank my colleagues on the City Council. This has not been easy over the last couple of weeks. We haven't all agreed, and we're not necessarily going to all agree this evening. But the level of respect for each other, and each other's views, and I think the incredibly helpful conversations as we make this decision for our whole community, has really been, has been a good process. And I just wanted to acknowledge my colleagues, and thank them for their thoughtfulness and their hard work. Because I can tell you right now, everyone up here has been working very hard on behalf of the city, and in behalf of everyone in this community, to think through this decision. Whether or not you agree with what was said, or what the ultimate decision will be, you should know that the people who represent you, your City Council people up here, have been working very hard on behalf of you. And I also want to thank the staff for their dedication and hard work. We had a number of questions come in, and city staff knew how important it was to have information for tonight's meeting. People worked over the weekend, people came in when they were supposed to have days off. And I just want to acknowledge, again, sometimes we may not agree on different things, but this, our city staff has been very diligent in making sure questions have been answered that residents have raised. I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues said, because I think they've all said it. That's sort of the nice thing about sometimes picking to go last. I will just say, from my own personal place, and where I'm coming from, so you know what went into my decision. As mayor, I represent the entire city, which includes people who are able to come speak at meetings, able to email, as well as those who can't, or don't want to, or find this space intimidating, or work two or three jobs, or whatever it is, or don't engage. But their needs, and this community is their community. And so, we need to be thinking about everyone, all their views, wants, and needs, as we move forward. And I think, as many people said, we have reiterated time and time again, the importance of the co-op in our community. I've said it, I'll say it again tonight, the co-op means a great deal to me. It was the first place I let my two kids walk to by themselves in our neighborhood. My daughter, my 13-year-old bakes, as many of you know, and I can swear, she probably sees Abdi more than she sees me. Because she is at that co-op on her way home from school, to think about what she's cooking for dinner, and then she comes home, forgets something, and goes back. So, we are there constantly. The idea of being able to walk, to buy groceries, to buy that last-minute thing, is very important to us. But this was a really, really tough decision. I have to say, as Councilmember Koreshi said, there were moments in the last three days, that was three days, that I was like, no, we're not going to do this, I'm not going to do the 30-day extension. Because I've sat, I've been asked to sit in the meetings. I didn't want to, honestly. Residents asked, please, observe the meetings, observe the conversations between MDC and the co-op, be there. So, I did it. And again, people said, oh, you're for the co-op, oh, no, you're for MDC. Well, I figure if people are criticizing me for both, then I must be doing something But really, moving forward, after listening to residents over the last few days, after listening to my colleagues, I agree that the best thing for our community, to really move forward together, again, maybe not all agreeing, but moving forward on this redevelopment, because in my mind, I want to make it perfectly clear for folks, leaving that parking lot as it is now, is not an option for me. It is not. It does not serve our community, it does not serve the environmental sustainability of our community, and it is not an option for me. So, we're going to redevelopment, redevelop this lot, and we want to do it as a community. So, I am asking that the co-op truly come to the table, that Mr. Washington and MDC truly come to the table, they look at what is right here in front of us, and they move it forward, so that this process can go where it actually should be, which is with the community, so that we can look at these designs, and do what some of my colleagues started to do tonight, and say, gee, is this what we really want here? Could we move this, could we make this bigger, could we make that smaller? Because that's the part of the process I want to get to. And that's one of the reasons I didn't want to do the 30-day extension, because I'm dying to sit down with these designs, with members of the community, and say, what excites you about that, what can we do here, so that we build something for our future, and that will bring us all together? So, I hope that can be done over the next 30 days, and tonight, I will be voting for the 30-day extension. And so, with that, I think we've all spoken, and if I tally the votes correctly, we will be inserting in the resolution A, the provide MDC with an additional 30 days to negotiate the required LOI. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Siemens, was that Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Second, any other further discussion or questions? Go ahead.
It's a technical question, is 30 days on a weekend, not on a weekend? Do we want to think about?
January 6th, I believe, is, January 6th is a 30-day, so it's up on January 6th, so when we come back on July 11th, we'll pick it up. My God, I did that so many times!
It's a great vacation.
Yeah, we're done!
I'd like to come back July 11th.
Right, we'll come back, yeah. Jan, when we come back, so that's why it's on our agenda on January 11th. Okay, so, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstaining? Nope, all right. Resolution passes. We are done, we are on December recess. Doesn't mean we go anywhere, so if you need anything, please find us, talk to us. And thank you to the Ability Project. I'm sorry, I'm so excited about that.
Love it, love it, love it!